Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Fender.
Present.
Councilmember Garamella.
Present.
Councilmember Rao.
Present.
Councilmember Robati.
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Present.
All councilors present.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Ann Robati will provide the indication this evening.
This evening, we ask for wisdom in our budget deliberations. We ask that we would all focus on the objective of providing the best for our town. We ask that we would all keep in mind that we all want the same thing, what's best for our town. We thank you for the fact that we can reconvene in council chambers, partially. We partially thank you for that. And we hope for speedy, efficient, and well-thought-out deliberation tonight. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We are now at item five, the Pledge of Allegiance. All who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one action item tonight, a motion to invoke Rule 19. Is there a motion and a second on the motion to invoke Rule 19 so we can conduct this partially virtually?
I'm going to be invoked Rule 19.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Steve Rao.
I second.
And a second from Councilmember Donna Fender. And Town Clerk Smith, please conduct a roll call of all council members on that vote.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, town council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Do any council members have any such conflicts? Okay. Seeing none, I believe Councilmember Fender would like to make a statement about tonight's agenda. Councilmember Fender.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have an item that I would like to add to the agenda after the consent agenda, and it's a time-sensitive item that I would like for the town council to review and talk about today, tonight. And it's for the Wake County Public School System Capital Improvement Plan that the school board recently voted on and approved. And this resolution, well, first, the CIP item proposes $4.9 million in fiscal year '21 for the middle school, high school in Morrisville near the Parkside Elementary. And the resolution is for the town council to support the Wake County Public School System CIP.
Okay. If you'd like to make a motion to that effect.
Yes, I propose a motion that we add this resolution to the agenda.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mayor Pro Tem seconded that one. Town Clerk Smith, will you please facilitate a roll call vote for the amended agenda?
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The amended regular agenda is adopted unanimously.
Thank you. We have an agenda. We are now at item eight, the consent agenda. There are seven items on the consent agenda this evening: approval of the April 28 meeting minutes, a resolution approving the FY 2020 paving contract, a resolution and budget ordinance amendment authorizing the historic Christian Church parking lot construction contract, consideration of text amendments to the UDO related to driveway spacing standards, consideration of annexation of 610 Airport Boulevard, a resolution amending town council policies and rules of procedure, and a resolution amending the appointed public body's administrative policy. Are there any items that any council member would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
A motion from Mayor Pro Tem. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate a roll call vote.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to approve the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We are now at the item that was added to the agenda. I will now recognize Strategic Performance Manager Erin Hudson to present this item at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Colley, and members of the council. Is everyone able to hear me clearly?
You can.
Yes. Okay, great. So just really quickly, as Councilmember Fender had stated, the Wake County Board of Education does approve a CIP and has been in the practice of doing so for the last few years. They actually do it on a roughly six- or seven-year plan. And so essentially, that plan covers a number of things. It covers lifecycle equipment replacements, educational equipment, furniture, technology security. It also includes land acquisition, environmental ADA issues, mobile relocations, things of that sort. So they have a joint team comprised of both Wake County Public School System and Wake County personnel who are part of this team and are responsible for kind of reviewing this information. The Wake County is responsible for funding the construction of schools for the Wake County Board of Education. And Wake County Board of Education passed this resolution on May 19th requesting that the Wake County Board of Commissioners take the necessary steps to provide funds for the school's, for the school system's capital-building needs. This information was provided as part of this item. You'll have a copy of the resolution that they approved, as well as a copy of the fiscal year '21-'27 CIP. A combination middle and high school, known as MSHS-11, that would be built adjoining Parkside Elementary School in Research Triangle Park, is included in the FY 2021 proposed budget, funded in the amount of $4.9 million for planning and design. That allocation was actually moved forward one year from FY '22 and proposed in prior year '2019 CIP. Construction is still anticipated for fiscal year '24 and '25, completion in calendar year '25. So really kind of giving you that background to substantiate that the inclusion of the school in the CIP demonstrates the recognition of the unique needs of Morrisville and their community for a middle or high school located in or near Morrisville. If council will remember, back in April of 2019, you also approved a resolution of support, excuse me, for the fiscal year 2026 Wake County Public School System CIP. So this is consistent with practices in the past. Happy to answer any questions that I can, if you have any at this time. And there is a draft resolution there on your screen for your consideration.
Okay. Would anyone like to make any comments or discussion on this issue? I'll recognize Councilmember Steve Rao, please.
Well, I want to thank Councilmember Fender for bringing this up. And I think I just want to thank all the citizens who work with us to these schools in Morrisville. My only question for council considered down the road is, we have been initially discussing also a Wake County early career house with Big Jack. So I just would like you to know as part of the CIP, would that be something that they would consider adding in the future? We have the first class five. I don't think there's any formal approach, but I think it's very important for us to learn about that and to, if we can't decide that.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing is the housekeeping. I could not hear Councilmember Rao very well. However, Mayor, I can hear you very well. So I don't know if there's any way to modify the microphone for Councilmember Rao. But with that said, I think I would like to echo the compliment to Councilmember Fender. This is a great opportunity for Morrisville is to have the design actually moved up a year. So we will be able to have a combined middle and high school much sooner in our area. And I fully support us commending and endorsing this change in their timing of the design work. So, and if we need to do other things, let me know. But I support this draft as it's submitted. Thank you. Councilmember Fender.
Recognize Councilmember Fender.
Yes, we'd like to have this reviewed by the Educational Committee at their meeting coming up. I believe it's in the next week. Have them review this and then bring back any feedback or comments that they have before we vote on it at our next meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, please.
Yes, I was just going to ask about next steps and about who the resolution would be forwarded to. So I understand that Donna answered part of that question. Is there anywhere else that we'll be sending the resolution once we've approved it?
Ms. Hudson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I will go back and just review where we shared our last resolution of support. I believe we shared it with the full school board, I apologize, with the full Wake County Board of Commissioners, and also with Wake County School Superintendent and our representatives on that board, just to reiterate our support of their partnership with Morrisville. But certainly happy to review and make sure that we're consistent. And also to, I believe, Councilmember Fender's comment, working with the Chair and Vice Chair of the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee currently to finalize their agenda and get them set to review and discuss this item at their meeting this coming Tuesday.
Thank you for that information. Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
So first, I just want to say we're in a little different setup here today. And I think the reason you all couldn't hear Steve before is we have new mics in front of us. And these mics do not require us to push a button to speak. The mics are always on, correct? Yeah, so we don't need to push any buttons, and we should be good to go from here. So hopefully you'll be able to. Steve was just talking about the early Wake Tech College and hoping that that would come to fruition as well for council members that are on virtually to, that was the comment he was making. But I also wanted to make a comment to thank Councilmember Fender for bringing this forward. It's an important resolution to show our support, and I just want to thank her for her efforts in bringing it forward.
I'd like to echo that as well, and just ask, Ms. Hudson, is there any reason we wouldn't send this also to the entire school board as well, rather than just our representatives?
No, sir, we certainly can.
Okay.
And if I could add, Mayor?
Excuse me?
The CIP has to be approved by the Wake County. It's in the Wake County budget. I think that's why the emphasis has been to every commissioner versus the school superintendent and our representatives. But happy to send it to everybody.
Right. Because they all have to work together, all nine. So when two of them get it, it's good for all of them to know that we're all active. So thank you very much. So next steps would be, this would, circling back to Councilmember Fender.
Well, I was just going to comment on what Martha just said. I believe what you're indicating is that we should send this resolution to the county commissioners in addition to the school board.
I would even tell you further, that is your intended audience, is that there is
a joint task force of Wake County staff and school board staff that now work collaboratively to put together the CIP. But it does have to fold into the Wake County manager's budget. When he submitted his budget earlier this month, this process was not complete. And the Wake County budget currently indicates this will be included in that budget. So it will get folded in, but that is your intended audience, the Wake County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Excellent. So next steps are for hopefully the Morrisville Public Education Committee to take a peek, and this will come back to us for potential vote on June 9. And another comment from Councilmember Garamella, please.
Thanks to Donna for bringing this up. This is good that they are able to fast-forward it by year. Regarding the Wake Tech Early College, it's my understanding, I don't know if our staff can also look into it, but they're already programmed. The building that is coming up will be part of their early, you know, high school or Wake, however you call it. But that's what I think last when I talked to the President of the Wake Tech, he said that was all programmed in for the building that is coming in. Martha, you have any information on that?
I don't, but we're happy to follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just offer one more clarification for council. While the planning and design has moved up in the CIP, the proposed construction years and opening years have not been advanced one year. They are still projected for fiscal year '24 and '25. But that does give them a front start and an earlier start to the design and planning process.
Okay. Thank you very much. And once again, thank you for bringing that one forward. We are now at item 10, public comment. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received earlier today.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. Four public comments were received from Hua Hua Wang, Jean Spooner, Mark Dixon, and Natalie Liu. All comments received were in support of the town of Morrisville, asking the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to deny the Wake Stone mining permit for a new rock mine on the Oddfellows contract. Councilmembers have received the full text of each comment, and any comment received will be included in the public record.
Thank you very much. We are now at item 11, future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. I'll now recognize Town Manager Paige for staff updates in regard to upcoming town events.
Thank you, Mayor. We are well into our budget review and deliberation process. And our next most important meeting after this one is on Thursday, May 28, where we reconvene in a similar fashion at 6:00 PM for another budget workshop. We also have a budget workshop scheduled for June 4 prior to another very important meeting, which is June 9, which will be our public hearing on the proposed budget. And irrespective of what format we're in, that public, as the mayor mentioned earlier this evening, is critically important to us, and we will continue to solicit that feedback through our budget deliberation process. I would like to turn it over to Brandon real quick to talk a little bit about COVID and some upcoming event activity there. And Erin Hudson will follow with some information about our board and advisory committee meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good evening. As you know, last Friday, Governor Cooper directed us into Phase Two of the, of what we're calling our Reconnect Morrisville Plan. They have changed terminology to a safer-at-home focus now for Phase Two. When that came out, it made some minor changes to what we had previously anticipated, primarily in three areas. One is that playgrounds have remained closed. So all of our playgrounds and our parks remain closed at this time. Secondly, there was a different emphasis on the continued use of telework. So our plan had previously assumed that we would begin to return more staff to the office based on the guidance provided. We've indicated all along that we will be flexible and to adhere to the guidance we get from the state and from the Public Health Department. So we held with the staffing levels that we were having in Phase One, which means generally one to no more than two persons per department in the office on any given day. Our intention right now is to reevaluate that as we move through Phase Two, but again, keeping our emphasis on making sure that our staff is healthy and safe and that we're doing everything we can to protect them. Along those lines, as you came in tonight, you may have noticed there are new devices on the doors to enter where they are touchless or at least not touching with your hands. So some of our doors have a larger grab for your forearm. Other of the doors inside the building may have a footrest that you can use so you don't have to handle the handles. And we are continuing a full assessment townwide in terms of what we can do to be touchless for now and in the future. The other change that came out of the guidance we received was maintaining a mass gathering limit of 10 indoors, and that number going up to 25 outdoors. If you see in the room tonight, there are nine of us. Although there is an exception for local government, we have elected to maintain the limit of 10 for at least the next two weeks as we continue to see how this evolves and how the testing data comes back, and if there's any additional guidance from the state. So we'll evaluate that as we go. But for at least the next couple of weeks, we are staying at a limit of 10 at any of our public meetings. In fact, we had intended to move to a live meeting for one of our committees and instead maintained a virtual meeting so that we are staying under that limit of 10 out of caution. The other piece that we would share with you is that we have given you in news and notes that the July 3 fireworks event has unfortunately been canceled for this year. We do not believe we're in a position to do that, given the guidance that we currently have. We are considering some other options to have some type of event to celebrate the July 4 holiday. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions for Assistant Manager Zuduma?
Nothing online.
Seeing none. Now to Ms. Hudson for board and committee update.
Thank you again, Mayor Colley. Appreciate council support. In one of your consent items earlier, one of the items you approved actually gives your advisory boards and committees the authority to act within virtual meetings, very similar to the action that you took back in April. They now have that similar authority to act virtually under a declared state of emergency. So again, similarly, we, a staff gathered over the last week or so, worked pretty diligently to ensure that we had some appropriate guidance to share with them, and did some test meetings, and really wanted to be able to help facilitate them to be able to return to their work. Several of them have not met in the last one to two months, given the cancellations and restrictions, and wanted to be able to provide them that opportunity to get back together and start meeting again. So what that means is effectively tomorrow night, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee is going to hold our first advisory committee virtual meeting. I would be remiss if I did not share thanks with our IT staff and our town clerk. They've really done the lion's share of pulling together test information and ensuring that everyone has connectivity and can access the information and teams as they need to. We're offering an opportunity for people to share a public comment prior to a meeting. We're also going to stream those meetings on Facebook so that the public can still stay engaged to the extent possible. So as we all work through some of these unique challenges that we've been presented, still trying to find ways to keep everyone engaged and continue with that work. So we'll continue on that path for as long as we need to, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I believe Assistant Manager Zuduma has a follow-up?
Just for technical issues, Mayor Colley, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson is having some issue with her meeting chat, but I just wanted her to hear me say that I can see her comment. She can't see it apparently, but I can see when she's sending a message if she wishes to comment her motion.
Okay, thank you, sir. You mentioned, Ms. Hudson, that the Parks and Rec meeting tomorrow will be streamed on Facebook. Would that be live-streamed?
Yes, it will.
Okay. And would people go to the town of Morrisville webpage or the Parks and Rec webpage for that?
The town webpage, I believe, will have the link from the meeting.
Okay. So we encourage people during this time to visit one of our virtual committee meetings, just like they're visiting this tonight. This would be great. Any other comments or questions about anything that we've heard from staff? Seeing none. We are now at number 12, council and manager comments. Did staff have any other updates? They do not. We will be going in order. I will first recognize Councilmember Rao for his comments, then Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council and everybody. It's just great to see everybody. And I hope everyone had a great Memorial Day. I know that it was a very unique Memorial Day, not being able to go to events, but want to thank all of the, in addition to honoring those soldiers who gave their lives to this country, I want to thank all the first responders, healthcare workers, the volunteers, all the things that we're doing as a community to come together. So we are very grateful, and I'm grateful for the staff for working with our council through this pandemic. I hosted a town hall meeting last week with John Loyac from Commerce and Matt Calabria, Commissioner Calabria. And I just want to remind the business community about the Wake Forward Program. It's a great program, $5 million that they can access of loans, not grants. So if there's any information, you can go there and take a look at that. And tomorrow morning, there's an event being hosted by the Carrie Chamber where Tom Stith, who is the North Carolina Director for the SBA, the Small Business Administration, will be talking about emergency disaster relief and federal programs. So you can also go to sba.gov/coronavirus for that information. One final question I have for staff, you don't have to answer it now, and then I've got one final comment, is in the Wake County budget, I attended the meeting virtually last week, and they talked about of the $193 million, some of those were going to be allocated to local governments and municipalities. And I really want to thank Chairman Ford for working with the mayor and other councils around the state for making municipalities partners. But I'd be just curious, as we go on, what COVID-related expenses mean. I know you've sent emails about that, but I just want the public to know that we'll do what we can to see if we can access dollars from the county. The final point I want to make is Deputy Manager Zuduma talked about Reconnect Morrisville. And, you know, one thing that I'm curious about, I've been reading up on contact tracing and how helpful that can be as we reopen when there's hotspots where you could know not only the people that have got the virus, but additional individuals that may have been in contact with those people. And I've been, just over the last few weeks, gotten emails from local entrepreneurs that are developing really unique apps for contact tracing. So I've told them, if they have an idea, to please reach out to the town manager, to you, and to our CIO to see whether there's some opportunity. But I think that it's an opportunity of technology and information being used to get ahead of this virus so we can slow the spread. So I just wanted to make those comments for the public. But anyway, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
So I only have two comments. First, it is really good to be back. So I want to say, good to be back in town hall, at least for some of us, half the council, a little more than half the council. So I want to thank staff for setting up the council chambers so that, and I'll speak for myself, so that I feel safe being back here in this room. This is a kind of closed environment right now. And as you heard, we have less than 10 people here in the room. It is not open to the public. And so I appreciate all the effort to help us sit more than six feet apart and be socially distanced, and to meet all the CDC guidelines, Governor Cooper's guidelines, and our own internal town of Morrisville guidelines. And as you can see, some people are wearing masks. They're a little, trying to be a little extra cautious or safe, and appreciate your efforts as well. But know that we are all doing and following CDC guidelines. So I thank you all, because I'm not sure I'd be here if I didn't know all the effort and the work that you were going to put into making this a safe environment. So I appreciate that very much, and I do enjoy being here, seeing everyone. It's great seeing everyone virtually, but there's something about in person, even though some of you are 20 feet away from me. But anyhow, so thank you for all those efforts. And then just the one, well, I'm going to add, actually, I'm going to add two more things. I'm going to add on to a little bit of what Councilmember Rao said. I was on a Zoom call this afternoon that the League put on with North Carolina Senator Tom Tillis, where he talked about some of the additional funding to come. And he talked specifically about a Main Street Lending Act that will be coming in two weeks to help our business community. So there are efforts out there that are continuing even today. So there are efforts out there that are continuing even today to help our business community and of course, as you can imagine, they were all elected officials on the call and so, a local elected officials from North Carolina on the call. And a lot of the questions revolved around the struggles that local governments are having with our loss of revenue and so hopefully there's more to come for us as well. So anyhow, and then the last thing I'm going to, the last thing I want to say, I want to encourage our citizens, you heard the town manager just a little while ago, encourage our citizens to give their feedback on the budget. The actual official public hearing is on June 9th, but the budget portal is open now. Several folks have already sent us comments and feedback, so I encourage our citizens to continue. This year more than ever, we need to hear from you as this is a challenging year for all of us. So I appreciate you all taking a look at the materials that are out on our town website and of course, you can reach out to me, to any of us, to ask questions and please continue to send in your feedback via email. So, thank you.
I'm next and I would also piggyback on the contact tracing. Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School has a free contact tracing class that I took, so I'll send the link to everybody. I did that this weekend, it was very helpful. So it's going to be really important to have a partnership with Wake County and their Health Department to do the contact tracing throughout Wake County. So please encourage your friends and your entrepreneurs to reach out to Wake County as well because that's the people that are going to lead that charge because it needs to be consistent. I want to thank American Legion Post 67 and Commander Spryson for including Wake County Vice Chair Vicki Adams and myself in the Memorial Day Ceremony at Hillcrest Cemetery yesterday. Thank you to the many people working so hard to provide food, masks and other critical items to our community. I want to make a special shout out to Laura James, the Site Leader for Food Security at Cross Timbers. They serve meals weekdays from noon until 1:00 PM. Stephanie Workman, who is overseeing the food security effort with Karen Morant in the Western Region. And for Kits Creek for providing cookies and for CM Fender for organizing and delivering them. I think that's wonderful. I have spent a lot of time biking and running on our greenways and I'm heartened to see so many of our families making use of these hidden treasures and for doing such a good job of social distancing. Keep it up. Due to virtual meetings, we are sharing our proclamations via social media and I would like to quickly recognize the following proclamations on behalf of the entire council. The month of May 2020 was recognized as Building Safety Month in the Town of Morrisville. The Morrisville Town Council proclaimed the week of May 17 through 23rd, 2020 as Public Works Week. The Morrisville Town Council proclaimed May 10 through 16th, 2020 as National Police Week and May 15th, 2020 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and encourages Morrisville residents and businesses to recognize the positive impact of the peace officers in our town and thank those who serve. One more proclamation will be shared before the May ends and that is in recognition of Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And at this point, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender for her comments.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. I had three things, but you already hit on the emergency meals. I was going to give a shout out to the residents in Kits Creek for providing all the cookies. I've just been overwhelmed with the residents generosity and donating the cookies and the snacks, so they have been recognized. I also wanted to thank Town Manager Paige and Erin Hudson for pulling together the presentation materials on the resolution to support the school board CIP plan. So I appreciate that. Y'all did that very quickly. I wanted to let, I'm going to be posting this on my town council page and my neighborhood's Facebook page, but Kits Creek subdivision will be hosting a blood drive next week, Thursday on June 4th, in the parking lot of our clubhouse from 1:00 to 6:00 PM. They did say if those time slots get filled up quickly, they will open up the time slots to the morning. So I'm sure, like a lot of us are aware that there's, the blood banks are running low on supplies because of the quarantine and lockdown and there have been, you know, Morrisville Police Department hosted a blood drive as well. And I noticed that some neighborhoods are hosting, so it was very, very easy to request that they bring the Blood Mobile to our neighborhood and set it up for a blood drive next week. So I encourage our residents, if you're able to come by there, it's the bloodconnection.org website and you can find the link to sign up. They will be doing the COVID antibody testing and giving out $10 gift cards. Lastly, I wanted to give a shout out to one of our women-owned small businesses in Morrisville. I'm sure, you know, as, I've been trying to support a lot of our small businesses as a lot of the rest of us have during this and a lot of our businesses were able to open up this weekend, like the restaurants, nail salons. So I've been going to the Red Nail Polish for longer than I've lived in Morrisville, eight or nine years, and I went by there just yesterday and I just wanted to commend them for all of the extra protections that they've put in place. They have plexiglass between the manicurist and customers, they have plastic covering all the seats, everyone's wearing face masks, the customers are wearing face masks. So I encourage anyone that is, you know, wants to go get a manicure or pedicure, I was, you know, I needed one desperately, so I hit them right away. They are taking all the extra precautions to prevent the spread of the virus. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Cindy and Ann there. They're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
So Mayor, I'm having some difficulties this evening with my connection, so my comments are very brief. I'd like to say that I'm very grateful that we have been fortunate enough to have very low count of illnesses across Morrisville and that we're entering Phase Two. And I'm happy to see that some of the council members are able to return back to our new normal, if you will. But this past Memorial Weekend, we did have some flooding in the area. We had flooding at Cedar Fork District Park, which is a known flood plain area, but we also had flooding at Town Hall Drive and Morrisville Carpenter that was significant. We received about four inches in one hour in that area on Saturday and we had to shut down the road in two places. So the flooding along Morrisville Carpenter Road is something that we need to be mindful of as we work towards the projects of enhancing Morrisville Carpenter Road. So there will be some changes as we expand the road once that project gets started for the Town Hall Drive intersection, but flooding needs to be looked at along the Savannah Ridgemont area since that area of the road really won't have additional construction for that project. But there will be crosswalk augmentation, maybe some readjustment, but flooding, flash flooding and stormwater management along Morrisville Carpenter Road is something that I'm watching as a neighbor in Morrisville, since I live in this area, but it's also something that we need to be mindful across town. So stormwater is important and thanks everybody for their work on that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Garamello, please.
I have two comments, I think echoing back to the four inches of rain. Unfortunately, Breckenridge, one of the houses in Breckenridge got hit by a lightning strike and it burst open, like the gas pipes and everything. But they are, the family is doing fine, I talked to them and, but somewhere, I think, I don't know if Martha, like if the fire department can do some kind of, the common problem I'm listening from all are the grounding, you know, how do we check or if there's any procedures, if the houses are properly grounded? And so if some information can be sent out, you know, people can take precaution because the house next door, the person grounded, had an extension in his patio, like mid-sunroom, and he had done grounding and his house was not affected at all. So something, I was thinking, you know, as I, as a homeowner, we came in, but we don't know what the quality of the grounding at that time and is it sufficient or if we had to take any precautions? On the other end, also, I want to thank staff, Martha and Jeannie for working, you know, through the entire long weekend and working on our budget and giving us all the options. Thank you very much for all that you have done. That's all for me.
Councilmember Rabadi.
Yes, three brief things. I also have it on my list about the lightning strike in Breckenridge. I just wanted to commend our first responders on not only their quick action and their quick response, but also the fact that they were, at the same time that they were dealing with the situation, they were also reassuring people from the public that had come out to see what was happening. And it was just a very, for an emergency scene, I thought it was very well-run and everyone was very calm and very professional, so I wanted to give them all a shout out. I posted the link to volunteer, anybody can volunteer to give out meals in Morrisville. I've done it, Councilmember Fender has done it, Mayor Colley has done it, I'm sure other council members have done it as well. There are several different sites and I posted the link on my Facebook page, Anne Rabadi, Town of Morrisville. So if you'd like to sign up, it's an hour and a half and you can do it as often as you want, in as many places as you want. And then I also wanted to just give a shout out to Martha, Town Manager Paige and Jeannie for the astounding amount of work that they put in over the budget in order to give us some real options and some real choices. And I think they laid out the possibilities very, very clearly, so I just wanted to say thank you to both of them. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you, council, for all your comments. At this time, we're going to call for a recess, according to the clock in here, it's 6:45, so we're going to take a 10-minute recess, reconvene at 6:55 in the same spaces that we are, and we're going to begin the work session, which we have scheduled for 65 minutes and we'll see how that goes. And so please reconvene at 6:55. Thank you. We're now coming back into session. I believe Councilmember Rabadi has a quick question before we get into item 13.
I do, Mayor. Thank you. I noticed that on the Facebook Live meeting, citizens are asking questions and I, I'm wondering if those questions are going to be answered on that Facebook Live post or if we can direct them to another more appropriate venue if they're not going to get the answers there. I just don't know what the protocol is for questions that are asked on the Facebook Live chat.
Town Manager Paige?
We will, we will be able to pull this off the record and incorporate them appropriately. We are not engaging in response during the Face Livestream, just as we wouldn't during a council meeting.
Okay.
Okay, but people will be able to get their questions answered? They'll be answered eventually?
I don't know what the questions are.
Okay.
We'll have the communications director take a look and we can follow up later.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention as we learn, as we move forward through this process. We are now at item 13, a work session. We have one work session this evening to discuss the proposed annual operating budget. I'll now recognize Town Manager Paige to begin.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to just go over very quickly, several of you have mentioned it, that you were delivered a lot of information over the last several days to continue to help facilitate your discussion. So I'm just going to go over what those items are and how we thought we could best proceed this evening to talk about some of those things. All of these items will be attached to the agenda item as we typically do, we update them. That will occur tomorrow morning, so what you see, the public will also be able to see. So what was delivered to you were the following documents. You received an updated FAQ document for all questions that we had captured as of May 24th at 3 o'clock that we were able to get answered. So that included everything the council had asked us and those that we were able to answer. There are a small handful of those questions that we are still working on in progress and we tried to provide you the best estimated time of when answers would be ready for you and in all cases, we're trying to have those complete by next Thursday. You also receive, there's one specific question that we're going to cover in depth with the scenario worksheets that we provided and Jeannie also has some supplemental information that was related to one of those other questions that we're going to go over this evening. We provided you all of the budget portal input that we had received through yesterday. We are aware there was one comment today. We will again update and roll that for your meeting on Thursday, but you have all input that was received as of when we sent that information to you over the weekend. We also provided a comparison of information of our peer communities in Wake County. That is something we have typically done. I will be the first to tell you that it is referential material. It's good information to have while also remembering that in many cases, we are similar and in many cases, we are not. So you, it's not a face value kind of comparison, but it does allow you to see what other municipalities in our community are also looking at and discussing, and that's especially important in perhaps a revenue neutral year. There are several budgets that are not public or not available yet and as we get those, we will continue to add that information and flesh that out for you. The remainder of the information that was sent to you was all related to alternative scenario modeling and in some form or fashion, many of you have asked to see other options than the proposed budget. And so we've put together a variety of documents and I'm going to go over those with you now. I would tell you the most important document is actually the narrative summary that really explains at each of these scenario levels, what is in a proposed budget at this level and what is not at this proposed level. Some of you have asked for what it would look like at a revenue neutral tax rate and some have said, what about our current tax rate? So you have scenarios at each one cent increment from 32.5 cent up to 38.5 cent and then an additional half cent increment of 39, which is our current tax rate. In two cases, you have multiple scenarios. I have provided five additional scenarios at my proposed tax rate increment of four cents and two versions at a 35 and a half cent tax rate increase over our revenue neutral tax rate. And let me do a little bit of explaining about why those levels of scenarios and at those levels. With the proposed tax rate, what we've tried to illustrate is really based on the feedback that we have received from you to date. It also tries to illustrate that there are trade-offs at that rate for anything you wish to add and anything that you wish to take out of a budget at that level. The revenues are fixed. We do not feel like we can move any further on being more aggressive on our revenues at that rate. And Jeannie and I even sort of checked in with each other on that as well to see if there was more capacity. So we just can't feel like we can squeeze any more forecast out at a 36 and a half cent rate. The scenarios that you've been provided at that rate really all reflect some lesser level of recurring expenses. level of recurring expenses. And that was based on conversation that council has had substantially around the level of new positions. And as you look at the narrative, which we will go over, what you really see is versions that have some differing levels of requests for positions, either full year or mid-year, and then what capacity becomes available to program recurring expenditures. The recurring expenditures that we focused on were primarily putting back in reserves and really concentrating on the two specific newer programs that have been discussed, at least in the FAQs, which is the Smart City initiatives and the sustainability initiatives. So it becomes from there really a math exercise to add in and subtract somewhere else. And we've used our best judgment to illustrate some various models of doing that. Things come out, and you can't proceed with those if you put other things in. That same situation occurs at the 35.5 cent level, just with about $600,000 less of revenue to work with. And so that does correspond with about $600,000 less of stuff, whatever that stuff might be. But again, with less recurring expenses, and that's important because one of the other questions that you've asked us is what is the future effects of adding recurring expenses? And really, I've given you 13 scenarios here, and what we're really sort of asking and challenging council is, is focus in, because we really don't want you to look at 13 additional revenue forecasts that would just sort of clutter up the discussion. So once we're able to really focus on the range of recurring expenses, we'll be able to better give you some of that forecast information and some tax rates that you're looking at. So that's really our basic request for you from there. In all scenarios, we've really left your fund balance appropriation approximately the same, and a best practice is 3% or less. And then, as you put more revenue into your budget, you should be relying less on your fund balance. So over the 36.5 cents, you see less reliance on a fund balance. That is your savings. It is there to use, but just want you to understand why we left it at that kind of level in most of these models. So I'm going to pause and see if there's any questions from anyone in the chambers or anyone online before I really sort of dive deep into the narrative scenario.
Okay, seeing none.
Okay. So I'm just going to start. We've numbered the scenarios. You have the spreadsheet. Let me do mention this. The spreadsheet really does reflect, if you look at your far-left-hand corner, that's really where that budget item is housed in the budget document that you have. Some of you have asked that question, where is this showing in the document? All of these items are from your pages that begin on page 29 of your budget document. And for those of those that we compiled some similar items together, you now actually see them broken down and what cost allocation goes with those, because some of those come in and out of these scenarios. So that is why we've shown you that information. The type stands for recurring or one-time. The other source is just, we don't want to get bogged down in this, but there are some expenditures that are specifically tied to some revenue sources. So if you take them out or put them in, you also have to do a corresponding revenue side if it's a very specific revenue. They're small, they're nominal, but that's how we balance the budget on our side, and we just wanted you to be aware of that. So if we start talking about a revenue-neutral tax rate, one of the things that Jeannie challenged me to do, and I admit it was hard for me because of the creative people, it's Jeannie, it's not me. But she said, give them something to think about at this level. So that's sort of the short title that you see in the red, bold italics. And I think that with Scenario A, I don't think I could have said it sort of any clearer, which is that level of revenue is not sufficient for our current base budget. And I don't know what else to say. Not only would nothing go in, we would continue to defer and take things out if we chose that revenue level. We already, I might remind council, at the 36.5 deferred some items and do not have the allocations. So compound that with four cents less, which for us is about $2.4 million in order to do that. Yes, some of that is COVID-related. And I think that's important as we start talking about forecasting, is had that not occurred, there would have been some different capacity at different levels. And so our proposed budget does try to balance the fact that we have a loss that we're currently experiencing, but we still want to properly balance for more than just our current capacity. So let's go up a penny. That's your Scenario B. That is what I'm calling a keep-the-lights-on budget. Nothing new. We are really at approximately the same revenue level that we had, and we could do approximately the same thing. We should then take care of some of our deferred expenses, and so we've added those deferred vehicle replacements back in. There is some ability to put some of the roadway and transportation reserve allocation back in, but there is no capital reserve allocation in this model. And future expanded programming needs would not be able to be met, and we would end up relying too much on our fund balance for recurring expenses, which is not a good practice. At the 34.5 cent level, I'm calling it a stay-the-course with existing program needs support only. So recognizing that we've grown, some of the costs go up for some of those programs, but we're not really recognizing the fact that there are new and other programs that we want to do. This model requests four positions, and as I've mentioned in some of my narrative, I don't think we can do without a network and security administrator or a human resources specialist for what we are doing. We are overworking that staff and not doing all of the things that we need to do. We've added our senior center. We could do that with part-time, but I think that would do our senior programs a disservice. And we have workload capacity in our public works at the front line that just gets deferred or delayed if we do not address those frontline needs at public works. This model includes no police staff, no fire staff, no sustainability coordinator, and no enterprise system coordinator. Of the four positions, two are being requested for a full year and two for a half-year. So what is not in this budget? No sustainability, no cultural programs, no park Wi-Fi, no IT initiatives, no EOC update, which we've been using every day since COVID started, no ability to even evaluate what our future space needs are as we put on more staff, no replacement of our public works equipment, no traffic unit equipment, no bond referendum communications plan. All other bond referendum expenses have been taken out of the budget. No smart city allocation and no smart city initiative at Cedar Fork District Park and no succession planning. And as I've mentioned, in this model, there is a roadway and transportation reserve, but no capital reserve, and our vehicle replacements are in. Before I go on to the 35.5 cent model, are there any questions from any councilmember I can answer at this point?
I have a question.
Councilmember Fender.
I just wanted to clarify your statement in Scenario A where it says revenues do not support the full year 2021 base budget needs. Does that mean, and it's no new positions, no new extra, but to me, that says it doesn't support the base budget, i.e. that means things would have to be cut?
It does mean that.
Do you know the amount that would need to be cut?
So most of those are deferred items that would remain unfunded, as well as the allocations that we've been putting aside.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all.
If I could just continue, Councilmember Fender, just to clarify. It does include those things that have increased. And I'll give you, a classic example is recycling. Those costs went up $110,000. We have to pay them. I have made a broad assumption in all models, based on your statements about supporting staff, that a 3% merit and those associated costs for current staff are included in all of these models. Any questions virtually? All right. So I'll go on to the 35.5 cent. This is one cent less than what I have proposed. It is three cent over the revenue-neutral tax rate. And in many cases, they are very similar models to the 36.5 cents. There are two models. Both include five position requests, so one more than what we just talked about. That expands and includes a sustainability coordinator for a half-a-year. It does put in some of the initiatives that had been excluded from the last one, which were the IT initiatives, some sustainability program, some space allocation needs in my proposed budget. I requested $250,000. The other models now recognize a smaller amount to work with what we have, but we do have to move some people around, and sometimes that takes some money to work with. Another valuable thing that we would like to consider is repurposing our old fire station one for some staff use. But there is some work to do to evaluate that rather than look at a different lease option. It would be a temporary solution while council considers other, more long-term initiatives for future space needs for staff. It's not just staff, it's meeting rooms, it's conference rooms, it's workspace, it's storage. We have all of those needs for the town, not just town staff, but for the town. The public works equipment, really our core frontline service needs are back in, public works equipment, Traffic City, and the Cedar Fork District Park Smart City project. What remains out of this budget is a partial allocation of any money for smart city initiatives. So there is no money for smart city initiatives other than the Cedar Fork District Park. Succession planning is not in here. Parks Wi-Fi is not in here, and parks and cultural and food hub programming is not in here. Vehicle replacements are added back in, and there are full allocations to our roadway transportation reserve and our capital reserve allocation. The other model just switches really some things around, which adds in a smart city allocation and succession planning, but it takes away a sustainability program coordinator and an emergency operations center. I think it really just illustrates that there's very few trade-offs. If you remember, we've talked about it a little bit before, you're looking at a proposed $38 million budget. You really have $5 million or so that you're working with to program capacity in, because the rest is your base budget. Any questions about the 35.5 cents model? Okay.
Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Yes, Martha, apologies if you guys have already gone over this more than once, but could you just ballpark for me at the 3 cents over revenue-neutral? I'm trying to get a sense of what that means to a small business or to a family in Morrisville. Could you just ballpark for me what that means if we go over revenue-neutral? It's a hard time to squeeze small businesses and working families. I understand that everybody has to make sacrifices. So could you just explain that to me, just briefly?
So I think so, and it's a multi-pronged question, because the impact of a property tax rate on a small business in Morrisville would be influenced by many, many, many factors, one of which could be the property tax rate, but in many cases, could also not be part of the property tax rate, depending on whether they own their building or rent or lease, and whether those property taxes are then passed through to a lessor or not, and then whether the small business owner lives in Morrisville or lives in somewhere else. All of those things would influence a small business owner, let alone how much square footage they have or any of those other types of things. Now, and if I could go on, Jeannie later is going to show some residential analysis for property taxes, and we are still working on the major question about the business and the commercial impact of a 55-45 split in Morrisville and how that may play out. I know I haven't fully answered your question, but does that help put it in some context for you?
It does. Thank you.
So I'll be able to provide you with a sampling of types of businesses across the town. I'll make sure that I try to focus on a small business element that owns the property, perhaps, to see if I can demonstrate and put some more context around that. I've partially finished the commercial piece today, so I'll just add to that just a little bit before I send it out, and I think that will help you. Another thing to keep in mind in terms of what impacts businesses, it isn't just about the property that they own, the land property or the building property. It oftentimes is the taxable equipment that is a part of the facility and the operations. So those are other things that get impacted by any tax rate change at any time of the year. Those actually get reevaluated in terms of value every year. Those are not a part of the four-year cycle of land or physical land and building revaluation process. So vehicles is another one of those that can be impacted, because that is a type of property that's owned by small businesses as well as citizens.
Right. Thank you.
A quick follow-up to that. So I think we've heard that $350,000 is the average house price or median. So one penny on a tax rate would equate to what?
So I'd suggest holding that till Jeannie gets to that part of the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all right?
Of course. Councilmember, I've had a question or comment.
Yeah, my question is, it just has to do with, as we look at forecasts, one thing that I've been thinking about and reading about is that you've seen a lot of increase in teleworking, just like, for example, Google and Facebook and Twitter have all announced they're not going to be requiring people for the rest of the year, possibly even forever, to come into work. And so I'm just curious as to how that goes in our, sorry, how that goes in our forecasts, you know, in terms of down the road, how that would affect economic development, you know, if there's people that, you know, companies that were going to expand in Morrisville that didn't, or there were companies in Morrisville that didn't, how would that affect our long-term growth? I mean, maybe we can't answer that, but this is something that I'm seeing, a trend, and I just wanted to bring that as an observation.
Go ahead.
So I think you're correct, and we're trying to stay attuned to all of the prognostication and the forecasts, and those are now starting to come, but nobody knows those answers. It is all speculation. It's really the first-quarter forecasts that are just coming out before... before COVID really took effect. And so, it again, it is going to be July, August, September, that, that really more than probably empirical and, and just forecasting is going to really be demonstrated in numbers. As, as we've talked to people, I think people think there will be some influence, but everybody also acknowledges they just don't know. As we internally evaluated space needs, saying, well, people aren't going to be in their places anymore. There's just another side of that that's going to have to get talked about, was shared workspace. And that's also going to be contra to perhaps COVID guidance. So, again, all of those things are going to have to sort of continue to be fleshed out. Pulling back on the request to, to dramatically start renovating another building, I think takes that into account, but we still have current needs that we cannot meet. And, and this room's an example. We're not going to be able to put the capacity of people in this room, perhaps, that we are used to having. So, we will still have to accommodate the public-facing part of our jobs. And how we do that is sort of unknown at this point. It does all need to continue to grow and mature. And as we've recognized, much of that is also still going to depend on how long the situation exists, which we also don't know at this point.
Thank you.
Mayor for Tim Johnson, please.
So, Jeannie, just going back to your comment before, or your answer to the question about how all of this affects a small business and the costs associated with running a small business. You talked about there's a tax on vehicles, there's a tax on equipment. Those are all efforts that are not under our control. The only thing that's under, I mean, we should be aware of and understand the other costs associated, but the only control, the only thing under our authority is the actual sales tax rate that we set that affects the property value of any property in the town of Morrisville. I just want to clarify a little bit.
But not sales tax.
Yeah, the tax rate.
The property tax rate.
I'm sorry, property, yes, thank you for, yeah, property tax rate. The property tax rate on property is the only thing that we have the authority to control. These other items you talked about, you know, the, that the equipment is evaluated, reevaluated every year, that's out of our control.
Not in our authority. As a local municipality, it is the, the Wake County Tax Assessor's responsibility. It is your taxes and tags responsibility with your vehicles and getting those inspected. It's just a number of folks that, that's really outside of our span of influence and control. You, every year, as a council, you have the responsibility to set a tax rate that will provide the revenue resources to deliver the services that you want, or you think your community desires most. Whether that is to raise the tax, take advantage of retaining some of the revaluation value that occurs this, at this time of, of a year, to really right-size and spread that tax burden equally across. Whether you choose to do that now, you can change your tax rate next year, and the year after, and the year after that. We've often had conversations in the past, well, you know, you don't want to change it every single year, but you do have that ability. That is what is in your singular span of control, and how that has an impact to your citizens, their affordability, as well as your business community, and their affordability.
Thank, thank you for that. And then, Martha, you mentioned about how, in one of these scenarios, the use of the old Fire Station 1. Are we still leasing part of that? Did that lease, we're not leasing?
It is vacant. And it's been vacant since the fall.
Okay.
And again, there, there's a broad range of things that would have to get evaluated. It is not currently authorized for office use. There's parking restrictions, there would have to be a variety of outdoor things. And part of the money was really to allow some of those things to occur. Again, if we only look at some interior stuff, we may have some more options to deal with, with some of our space needs. But at least that, a small amount in the budget would allow us the ability to explore that.
Okay. It's, it's been, it's been a number of years since I've been in that building. So, I guess, so I apologize if the comments I make are not, are not accurate anymore. But the last time I was in there, it wasn't, it, it, I'm not sure I want to put our staff. There's a reason we left that facility and built a new fire station. I always thought that, that building would be best fit for maybe a parks and rec kind of art studio, because it is a little worn and, a little loved.
So, a little insight is, we actually evaluated it at a staff level for a senior center. And, and it cannot work for that. Again, there are some railroad encroachment restrictions, public safety use. There are a whole, there's a whole litany of things. I myself may not wish to work in that building as it sits now, but we have at least walked through it and think that it, it could be salvageable. Remembering it was a fire station, we have a whole component of our fire staff in one of our buildings here, that if they would repurpose back to a fire station, and may want to, that would free up capacity for other staff. Just as an example.
You know, I leave it up to you and your judgment, but it, it, it's going to need a whole lot of work, I think, before it's good for any use. But, okay. And then, the last thing, just to kind of throw this out there, and I really appreciate these scenarios, because this, this really has been helpful to, to really get your hands on and understand what each one offers, or better yet, which each one does not offer. And I will tell you, for me personally, the, the one and two cents scenarios are just, they, they just so added the question for me. That is, it, it gets us almost nowhere. And it, and it doesn't get us ahead in any capacity, and it, and it leaves us behind the eight ball. And that's not, not what I want. And, and when we talked last week, one of the, when we talked about our interests, one of my interests was to, to keep moving forward and to keep the progress that we've made at least the same, if not better. I want to see, I want to see progress, but at least the same. And, and those scenarios take us back. So, I, I'm just, it's important to kind of, for me to throw that out there right now. But I, I don't like the three cents scenarios either, by the way.
What it potentially sets you up for is, because you're deferring so much, you could potentially be harming your future projections. While you might recover revenues next year, you now have to play that catch-up game, because you've deferred items that were necessary. And there's some pretty substantial items that, that would need to be purchased. That starts eating up that capacity that, that might come back next year from recovered revenues.
And I'll, I'll just go ahead. You've, you've opened a, a door to allow me to sort of editorialize a little bit on, on the philosophy of putting together and what staff requested. You know, we didn't flip a coin and say, oh, let's see if we can get this. We, we listen to what council and what we hear from the community, and what's in our strategic plan, and the things we know we need, and, and put all of those in a pot, and try to then responsibly balance that entire list with just very limited capacity. And, and what I've unfailingly heard is council wants to keep moving forward, make progress. And we've talked about a lot of big initiatives. And you see some of those in here. I think it also balances with, we can't do everything all at once, and that there is some caution and concern in the wind right now. And so, it, I think staff certainly understands the caution, and appreciates the caution that council is putting into this discussion. And, and as you've heard us before, we'll implement what works for you. We don't want you to not think about the future impacts of your decision this year on future years. And there is always a future impact. And it's just making sure that we provided you with all of the information that you need to make tough decisions, and that you do see it differently. And while some may have thought this was overkill, it was trying to illustrate there are different trade-offs that different people see, so that you've got all of those things that you need to consider in front of you.
Thank you, Town Manager. I don't see any other questions, if you want to proceed.
So, now, let's go to the 36 and a half cent rate, which is the proposed budget. I'm not going to go over the budget that you've seen in your budget book. I know that you're certainly familiar with that. So, I'm just going to focus on the other scenarios that we provided to you. And the first one would be, based on our conversation so far, what I would tell you staff's recommended preferred alternate at this level is. And, and I think it's pretty simple to see, is the, the staff requests have been significantly dropped to what I think we would consider essential, while recognizing that there has been a significant discussion, more so this past year, but not just this past year, for some sustainability programming that's more focused than the way we have been doing it. So, it includes that sustainability program coordinator, and all of them would be requested for the full year. It would defer until future year considers that both of the public safety staffs and an enterprise system coordinator. All of those positions are important, and all would come back to you at some point for additional consideration. And we would go through the same process of balancing our needs and our wants in, in a budget forecast, which I think we all hope is much more back to normal for fiscal year 2022. I'll insert here, that we've talked about, and we've tried to detail it very much in the FAQs already, that there are many mid-year triggers that we can put in place, so that if council wants to consider additions at that point in time, they can. Our approach in the original budget was sort of laying the groundwork so that you wouldn't have to revisit a budget discussion again mid-year. But we can. If we find through our triggers that our fund balance is healthy, or that our revenues have continued to come in better, or that the timeline for the COVID impacts is less, we would be able to revisit these things if council wishes to do it. So, it's an in-at-the-front or in-at-the-back kind of approach is the best way I describe that. There's a few that are, just a few items to balance that are removed, which mostly is that space renovation outfit with some request, and the succession planning. And I would request that the succession planning, that you give me some authority to use any lapse salary to at least start that process. We've done that with some other personnel-type items successfully before, and it could work here. What was added into this model were the smart city allocation, the remainder, which is, so initially, CIO Ralph thought $250,000 would be a reasonable budget to do a, a variety of initiatives. So, it would take the request from $100,000 to $250,000. And it would take the sustainability allocation from $50,000 to $100,000. So, in addition to what I believe is envisioned to be some solar panels, it would provide some other supporting programmings for a sustainability effort. And both the CIP and roadway and transportation allocations or reserve, reserves are back in this proposed budget. I mentioned in the earlier part of the narrative, the fire apparatus reserve is in none of these models. That is a multi-year add that we put into there for big purchases. We will have to increase that in future years, but it is not essential for this year to do. We do not have a large apparatus purchase coming up for several more years. So, we do have several years to make that up. The next scenario, which is Scenario H, again, adds some more positions back in. It adds in the three fire captains, so fire, no police. Again, the space renovation is the same as I've just described, and it does put that smart city, sustainability, and all the reserves back in. The next Scenario I goes up to 10 positions, takes out the fire captains, but puts in the police. Police is very expensive to bring on by virtue of all the equipment that they need, in particular, police vehicles. So, it is a big item when you're adding a police unit of any kind. When Chief Andrews and I talked, we talked about partial units, and she did not think that was a viable option. So, it's, it's really an all-or-none kind of approach. And, and I've included in the FAQs, in large substance, her direct comments to me as we discussed this. The smart city allocation is in, and the roadway transportation is in, but the CIP is not. And then, is this the last one? Nope, I've still got two more. Okay. Scenario J has six position requests, so everything but police and fire. This is really an emphasis on our internal operations. The space renovation I've mentioned, but it does put in the smart city, the sustainability, and a council contingency, which we've had in past years. Just some allocation for something that council may wish to explore and pursue in the future. You may always do that through an allocation of fund balance, but this puts it in there for some quicker response to things that may come up. And both reserves are in the budget. And then, the last 36 and a half cent item is 12 of the 13 original requests. It leaves out the enterprise system administrator, and we would find some internal ways to continue to support that for another year. The succession planning and the space renovation, as mentioned. Roadway and transportation in, and CIP reserve not in. And I, I think what, what I'm really showing you is, is that CIP reserve is in or out, depending on whether police are in or out, because of the cost of the vehicles, and trying to balance those recurring and one-time expenses. So, that is all of the 36 and a half cent scenarios. Can I answer any questions about any of those?
Town Manager, I'd like to begin. Going to your preferred scenario, you mentioned revisiting mid-year, police, fire, et cetera. How would that?
Mayor, could you tell me which scenario you're referring to?
Your preferred, I think it was G.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned that we could revisit halfway through the year, and I thought that was the, the design of actually having it in a budget, so it's, the money's there. If you, if we revisit halfway through the year, does that have to come out of fund balance at that point, because it's not in the budget now?
If, if we do not put it in the budget, and we came back to revisit it mid-year, it would be an allocation out of available fund balance, correct? This way, it, it, it's just really being programmed at the front end in my proposed budget, versus coming back once you know what those numbers are. And that's been the substance of a lot of the discussion I've heard from council, is, is, I'll say, wanting to, to activate that now, or wait and see where we're at. That's been a substance of the discussion. So, that model shows that other side from what I put in the original proposed.
And would you expect at that time, if we're going to be using fund balance, that fund balance is not a sustainable way for recurring costs? So, the expectation would, that would have to be embedded into the base budget going forward?
I think what we would be telling you is, at mid-year, we would have known what our fiscal year '20 results are, and what we added, I think, from, from to fund balance. But we would have also been able, after mid-year, to reforecast revenues. And that's the recurring part that would occur at mid-year.
So, yes, it would have to be added in.
Yeah, you'd still have to appropriate it, which comes out of fund balance.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up. I see Councilmember Ralph has a question?
Yeah. And I'm sorry, I have to just take my mask off, I want to talk, it's very hard for me. The, I guess my question is, you're going into this meeting. The, I guess my question is, you're going into this meeting, it's been very helpful to me to see what revenue neutral will not get us as we look at our strategic plan. So, you know, the question to me is, the tax rate we decide to arrive at as a council, how will it move us forward on our strategic initiatives? So, you know, for me, what I'm, what I want to know is, what guidance you need tonight going into the work session that we have on Thursday? Because what's giving me a lot of things to think about are the trade-offs. You know, for example, we've worked really hard on our smart city initiatives, and under the three cent, it basically, you know, forcing us to make a decision, under we want sustainability and smart city, which I think both could be helpful. But the other thing that I'm concerned about, and Councilmember Robati hit it on when she asked the question about the impact of the business community, is there are people out there that I've been talking to and seeing that are being furloughed, that are having to take pay cuts, losing their jobs, and businesses also that are being impacted. So I just want to make sure, as we review this budget, that we're also factoring that in. Under, you know, Town Manager Page, when you say that we can come back mid-year, would that be, does that mean that if we were to agree on a three cent, one of those scenarios that we would be able to revisit if revenues came back to say, okay, on one budget, we did smart cities for the one that we voted on now, or sustainability, that we could come back and put that position in, either one?
Yes, but there's some practical realities. So, just trying to be, you know, fully transparent. We're going to be talking about mid-year, late January. Let's say you say, okay, hire this person. The practical reality is that person's not going to be coming onboard till July. It takes time to recruit, put all those things in place. So I just don't want you to think that January 1 or February 1, that person would be in place. It would start a process to then recruit, just like anything you would approve for July 1 is not going to really be in place July 1. So just those realities of, and work will be in progress, and so we'll fit it in because staff will not have prepared for a full year to know this is part of their work plan, or this is coming, and they need to be prepared at a certain time. So it would be new workload inserted in at that time, just some realities of our work. You cannot, and I was waiting to see if you want, you cannot change your tax rate mid-year one time a year, now.
Yeah, I understand that. My question is, and I just want for my, for the public and for my colleagues to just know my thought process. I mean, for me, if we weren't in a COVID, post-COVID or COVID economy right now, I would, I would absolutely look at the four cent. My only concern is, you know, we talk about affordable housing and helping those that, you know, need places to live, so I just want to make sure that we are taking a look at the big picture. But it just, you know, it seems like anything that we do, other than the four cent, is going to require a trade-off, just in terms of not being able to get everything that we want in the budget. And I'm not willing to make that decision tonight. It's just that I want us to, I think transportation is also critical in terms of having funding in place with everything DOT is going through. And also, the, you know, obviously, public safety is very important, and cybersecurity. And I was recently at a, at an event, a virtual event that was held by the North Carolina Department of Information Technology, and Town Manager Page has affirmed it, it's absolutely true that we are so, any city in North Carolina or around the U.S. is so vulnerable to cyber attack, even more than ever before. So those are just some of my thoughts. I just wanted to get them out there before, so.
And thank you. And even the four cent is trade-offs. A lot of things I've heard there as well, I would think. One thing that you did mention about bringing things on, and Town Manager Page mentioned the fact that it takes a while to onboard, so items that aren't on the budget that we revisit in January, those would be different than ones that are actually embedded in the budget and planned for half-year, because then you could know that that's part of the work plan, and those are positions that you're planning to do unless we scale back. So that's an important nuance there, that if, if we're looking at half-years and we actually fund the half-years in this budget, those are things that actually do come on January, February, March, rather than July of the following year. So is that an accurate way to relay that? Okay.
And staff recognizes this is the issue that's even more pressing for council to deal with this year versus even other budget years. And I, Councilmember Rao, I just want to follow up, is, for us, we're talking big numbers. We're talking a cent is $600,000, and Jeannie's going to illustrate, that's not $600,000 to all of us individually. That's, it's, it's very small in some cases, and it has an order of magnitude, no question. But when you talk about the individual impact of a tax increase, dollars-wise, Jeannie's got some examples that's going to illustrate that. And that may speak more to how it affects people, that part of the conversation that she's going to, to help council understand.
And the only reason I bring that up is, to me individually, and I mean, I just think that it's important for us to take a look at the impact on the individual, because I don't want to make any decision in budget without the fact of the matter is, we're dealing in a very different norm. Now, it might be that maybe it doesn't, not matter that much, but I can't make a decision on the, in terms of guidance, what is the, what is the, what is the goal of tonight? Just to come together on?
We need you to narrow your focus.
All right.
So that we can focus on what else you want to talk about. We've asked you this before, I'll go ahead and say it again. We are happy to answer questions and provide information, but make it meaningful. Don't just ask stuff to ask stuff. It needs to inform your discussion. More information isn't going to, if it's not going to help you either reconsider or add value to the conversation, we don't want to just be creating FAQs because you like them.
And to echo what Councilmember Rao was saying, I think we're all going to be looking at this with compassion and empathy, both the residents and the businesses. All our decisions are based on that. Councilmember Fender?
I love that you put these scenarios together, and they help me out a lot in seeing the different options that we have. The only thing is, I don't see the exact, the exact configuration that I would be in favor of. I know you talked to Chief Andrews, and she's very willing to forego the traffic unit for a year. However, when I'm reading what all is included for that unit, and knowing, knowing the past history we've had with traffic problems in Mooresville, and the multiple wrecks that we've had at Davis McCrimmon, Davis at Mooresville Carpenter, you know, I think, in the residents' eyes, that that is a very hot topic. I mean, we haven't heard anything about it for the last two months because we just haven't had the amount of traffic that is typical in Mooresville. But I think traffic and one of improving the intersection, the safety at our intersections is in the forefront of our residents' mind and very important to them. So I'm, I know that's, I know she's willing to forego it, and it's not included in your second preferred option, the G scenario, but I would, I think that that's a pretty important initiative to include as soon as possible. I would hate for that to be delayed a year, considering how important it is to a lot of the residents. Along with that, when I look at the different options, you know, I'm still, I am so grateful that you guys included the sustainability program coordinator, and the smart city initiatives, and the sustainability initiatives. I wonder, I mean, I hate to, I don't want to create more work. If it's, is it even possible to have an option where it includes the traffic unit and still puts emphasis on the smart city initiatives and the sustainability initiatives?
So I'll, I'll talk about the first part and then talk about the second part. So I want to make sure I haven't confused council. There are two one-time expenditures related to intersections that are not police-related, and those are not altered in any of these scenarios. Those work efforts would still continue. This is more about response to traffic accidents, filling in at places sometimes where things might occur, weather events. Lights are out, school crossing guards are not there. We respond to those now, and would continue to respond to those now. Those serve, we respond to every accident. Where, what's the trade-off there? Regular patrol, community policing, we're taking them out of service while they respond to accidents. So that's just sort of one of the trade-offs. That's part of what they do anyways. And if it would be a large-scale event, all of them would come out of service for patrolling. Sometimes it might make response times longer, just depends on the day and the time and a whole variety of factors that the police just operationalize handles for highest priorities. Chief Andrews has requested the equipment because patrol could use it, learn it, get used to it, start developing the programs, and do activities with that equipment. So the equipment for a traffic unit is still here, and I think she would probably have staff work on it, and they have a performance and merit plan that I'm sure some of them would work on projects as well. So everything still gets serviced, it is just some trade-offs. Another thing that I think influenced Chief Andrews, besides she's just a phenomenal team player, and she gets it, I have to give her credit for that. She is a consummate team player and performer, and understands what council has to consider. She's very appreciative of the advocacy that council has demonstrated for fairly compensating the police officers she does have. It has been a recruiting disadvantage. Police recruiting in and of itself is just a significant hurdle for our community and many others. You have an item in the budget for a partnership collaborative through Triangle J to help all of us more effectively recruit police officers. We have four vacancies. We will have one more by the end of the week because we have another officer retiring. Filling those positions is her priority. And I think she probably recognizes until some of that collaborative is in place, even if you give her the positions, she may not be able to fill them because of the recruiting. So I think she's trying to recognize that if she could get fully staffed, that also helps with some of the workload. And once that recruiting pool is better in place, that might help with a request for four officers next year.
What is that equipment that they would still be?
There are four items. There is a drone to be able to look at not only traffic situations, don't have to be right onsite, there's traffic reconstruction training, what are the others? A mobile camera, and a speed trailer.
We'll hear from Mayor Pretan, and then maybe we'll let Town Manager finish the presentation, and then we can circle back to details. Mayor Pretan?
Donna just made me think of a question. So the, the CIP capital reserve expenditure that you did put back in here for some of these scenarios, that's not for the police equipment?
It is not.
Those are separate line items. When you talk about the equipment, okay, that, I didn't realize that.
So there are two intersections, and I may have, I may have confused you even further. There are two items. One is a $100,000 item, and one is a $125,000 item. So total, $225,000 for intersection studies and improvements. Those are physical, not personnel-related things where there might be items that we could do to improve traffic movement and mobility in those areas. We have proposed the funding for those two items to come out of the CIP reserve. If council wants us to not use that CIP reserve for that item, we'll just use fund balance. That would be a legitimate use of fund balance and keep your reserve. And in one of these other models, add to your reserve.
So it's transportation reserve? So if you wanted to?
I'm sorry, transportation reserve.
Many of you have spoken loud and clear that that's important to you, so if not, then as Martha indicated, it would be fund balance reserves that we would pull from.
And we did not muddy these models with that. The other item that came up and is kind of talked about in an FAQ is the other funding mechanism that we mentioned was for the smart shuttle, and which one, is that also out of the roadway?
That's also out of the roadway.
Okay.
Half of it is.
If you direct us not to use those reserves for that, we would recommend use fund balance.
And that was a one-time, one-year?
One-time capital.
Strategy because your revenues are potentially struggling.
That could be programmed into any of these models.
Your operational revenues, your new revenues would have to cover it from that point forward. It should not be after the first year, it becomes operational dollars. It should come from your revenues and how you raise them.
And a reminder, with the smart shuttle in particular, it's high on the capital investment at the front end, and it balances out to more of an operational. And that's, it becomes recurring over time.
And I think I'd add, going back to your personnel comment about using mid-year, wanting to appropriate, using fund balance to allocate or start recruiting for positions. Martha's strategy, as compared to what maybe we've done in the past in recession times, is by front-loading it, you know what the expectations are. You know that could be something you can manage and control. If she puts it as a half-year implementation, you give her the ability to manage and control the timing of that in alignment with maybe how revenues could recover in the year or not. If it's the not, the latter, then she can say, no, it can, it's positions that could be frozen, we're not going to implement them in January, we're going to wait till we see revenues recover. If it's the other scenario where you go mid-year and want to put these new positions in, it does hit fund balance one time. But you have to make that decision knowing that your new revenues in your future years can sustain that operational impact. You can't go in blindly saying, okay, I'm still not seeing revenues recovering this year, but I want to add these positions, and I'm just going to take it out of fund balance. That would not be responsible. Fund balance, it is, it would be going against your policy. You would be using fund balance as a one-time appropriation for operational items. But that's your choice, that policy is in your control, in your hands. But I would advise you to do it knowingly that you are seeing revenues, or we're advising you that revenues are recovering, so that the future, it can sustain it and take care of that operational impact. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
So we do have some council members virtual who have some questions, but I'm going to ask if the manager can go ahead and finish the last two scenarios, just to get them out there.
Are there questions about the 36.5 cent scenarios?
That's why it's kind of hard to know.
I just have, I have comments from all three.
Okay, let's assume that they are about those scenarios. So let's hear from Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson first, please, and then Councilmember Robati.
Thank you, Mayor. In order for us to get through this, can I ask that we have my comments, Councilmember Robati, and then Councilmember Garamella? Because we're virtual, it's a little easier on both our parts as well as the audience. And then we can return back to Town Manager Page?
That's the plan, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. I just, you know, this is our first hybrid meeting and it's kind of confusing as to how, how it best plays out. So, I really want to thank Jeannie and Martha for more than I asked for. I, I was the one that asked for the revenue neutral rate at 32.5 because I really felt it was important for the council to understand the baseline budget at revenue neutral so we could clearly see where we started. And I think everybody, from what I can gather, does not support revenue neutral because it does not maintain our current standard of operations. There are actually, and I heard this earlier in our questions, cuts to existing services. And that is something that is very difficult. And I would like to avoid that if possible. But I am still taking this from a very conservative standpoint in the sense that we do have an unknown economic situation. We do have neighbors and businesses that are going through a very difficult period right now. And we want to be sensitive to that. However, um, we also need to keep the town moving forward. So, where I am landing right now with the information that I have is the three cents scenarios do allow us to continue the one cent allocation for road improvements, which is very important for the town of Mooresville. It does put back some of the public works, equipment that has been needed for many years. It does provide some equipment for police to use in conjunction with traffic management without the staffing that is along with it. There are benefits that are enhancements that are provided in that scenario that are public-facing. The one area that I do not like, if you will, is that there was an exclusion of the food hub and of the cultural, um, programming. And those are very small amount of money, like 10 grand and 25 grand. But the public-facing benefit for those programs is significant. Over the last couple of years, we've wanted to enhance our cultural programming and we have not been able to. And also, the food hub has been phased in over time, actually since 2013 when I first joined the council. And we need to continue the educational piece of the food hub, which is a very modest amount. But I, I think that with the three cents, we still can do some public-facing benefits on a very minimal scale with minimal amount of investment. So, we would be able to move things forward. So, that's where I am right now. And I will turn it over to Councilmember Robati.
Councilmember Robati, do you have questions about 36.5?
I have questions in general, certainly. So, my first question is, on the, on all of the budgets, actually, I see that the Sustainability Programs Coordinator is budgeted in at $12,000 all the way across. And I do not understand that. So, that's one question that I have. I agree with Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson about the cultural programs and the food hub programs. And I was wondering if it would be possible to, um, maybe, maybe there's a way to wait another year on the Sustainability Program Coordinator while still moving forward with the sustainability efforts that staff has, that staff has been doing. I think, I really do think that staff has brought us pretty far along that road. So, that was just something I wanted to throw in the hopper. I appreciate Chief Andrews' offer to not take those additional officers at this time. And I agree that we, we seem to be landing at an acceptable place right around this three cents. I certainly don't want to go, I don't want to lose anything below that. But I also am concerned about the food hub and the cultural programs. So, that's what I had. Thank you. Oh, I, I'm sorry, I do have one more thing. Sorry, 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 sorry. The pedestrian safety improvements I see here that are funded across the board. And I just want to make sure that those are sidewalks and not something else that I'm unaware of. Now, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. So, the $12,000 you referenced for the Sustainability Coordinator, that is just the onboarding cost for a new employee. The salary and benefits is in a different line. So, that, that's that explanation of that $12,000.
Okay. There we go. Yes, thank you.
So, in general, to all of council with this specific item, the cultural and food hub programming, but it will go for anything else. What we've tried to illustrate for you is there are trade-offs. There's trade-offs in any scenario. It's how much they are. And it's whether they're recurring or operational. If, if, if council gives us the guidance on these are the things we want to see and these are the things that we're flexible with, let staff go back and bring you models that illustrate that. And, and there are ways to do that. We've shown you 13. There's probably a million. But, so, if, if council wants to put those things in. As we balanced these out, our philosophy was new stuff versus existing stuff. Just so you've got that. This is a new programming content, cultural and food hub programming. It is one council wants, but it's new stuff. And that's why it's gone in and out of some of these budgets as had some of those other things. Regarding the do, the sustainability initiatives without a coordinator, that is an option. You don't have a devoted cohesive effort, but it certainly would pay for an initiative. And that is an option council could consider. The pedestrian safety improvements are not sidewalks. I'll come back to that. We periodically get requests for things like crossing walks or traffic calming devices or flashing lights, that that's what that money is intended to cover. As we've mentioned, we are currently, our engineering department is currently seeking proposals for design services to design some sidewalk segments. And we will come back, we will be able to come back to council with real cost estimates that you can award contracts. And at that point in time, we have some existing money in a sidewalk construction fund that's reserved for that. And you could also choose to add to that at that time.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella.
Thanks, TJ. I have a couple of questions for Jeannie because I'm seeing three different numbers. On the first slide, when we got the 1 cent and 2 cent, it was, it was told 1 cent is equivalent to 620,000. And on these FAQs, it says 615,000. And then we keep saying 600,000 in many of our conversations. Which one is the right one?
So, we're just basically rounding up when we say 600,000. That's really all we're doing. For the purposes of just making the conversation easier, it is the slightly higher number above 600,000.
Now, the reason I ask that because when you take that 15,000 or 20,000 and multiply over, you know, the tax rate, that's almost $2 million higher. So, that's the reason I wanted to ask which one is the right one.
Yeah, it just makes the conversation easier when they're whole numbers to round them up. That's all.
Okay. And I had, I had one fundamental question is, um, when we see the revenue neutral and how do you determine the revenue neutral amount? If you can give me like a quick synopsis because do you, do we already estimate our future growth models into it, that it cannot sustain a revenue neutral? Or what are the reasons why we cannot sustain a revenue neutral? Is it because, um, like Martha said, an example of, you know, the, uh, the recycling has gone up or, you know, for 110? So, what are the factors? Because I'm, this is for me and, and, and the rest of our public because our property assessment has gone up and then that has added up on top of it. And to do all these, how, how does it work? If you can give me like a one minute.
Do you want that or do you want me?
I'll, I'll, let me start. So, so a revenue neutral calculation rate gives you, gives you credit for what's your normal growth. And for us, that's about 3% in a, in a year outside of revaluation of property. We, we have tended to grow 3% based on just assessed value increases either from development or, or adjustments year over year. And that's taken into account when we calculate a revenue neutral tax rate. Future growth is not calculated into our revenue neutral tax rate, but it will every year when we forecast our future revenues. So, I, I, I think that's it. Remember that currently, we, we, we have adjusted our current year forecast of revenues and future forecast of revenues for the current loss of sales tax. So, rev, so our property tax revenue is really supplanting lost sales tax at that current revenue neutral tax rate.
As well as some, some, really some other revenues-
Others as well.
That it is impacting also. The other thing that I would add is, you know, your cost just to keep the lights on or to, to move what exists today forward inflates and, and inflates at a rate-
About the same.
-similar to the 3%. That is our natural growth in our revenue, typical natural growth. We're, we're not a current, we're not realizing that same kind of natural growth this fiscal year. And we can only anticipate that we'll have greater deferred impacts next year, uh, next year meaning 2022, because you've deferred everything. Now, you got to play that catch-up game. That becomes more compounded impact on that budget in the future. Or you have to spread it out over time. Or you have to continue this strategy of slowly creeping it back in, these, these deferred items. The other thing is you are asking staff to do more and expand programs you've already committed to. And I think that's what I want to remind council, that your revenue neutral tax rate doesn't allow you to even continue those commitments to senior program. And you want to expand senior program. You want us to go out and lease a facility. That costs money to run those programs in addition to and over and above what we already have. MAFC, you've renovated, you've committed to renovating a facility. You're about to bring that back online. That revenue neutral tax rate isn't going to allow you to meet the expanded opportunity potentially in an MAFC newer facility. To be able to maximize the capacity that you now gain. We've always talked about, we can't grow some of our programs, our fitness and athletics program, our fitness and aquatics programs because we're constrained by the building capacity. Well, now you build a building, you expanded the pool, but you, you're not going to provide the revenues and the resources to be able to sustain and expand those programs to that capacity. So, that's some things you have to think about. At a revenue neutral tax rate, it's not the new stuff that necessarily gets added in. It's the stuff you've already committed to and given us direction and marching orders. And we're saying that's not going to be enough.
Um, I, I get. And thanks for the explanation. The reason I ask all these things is, uh, it's twofold. One is come next year. Will we, will we be in the same situation, you know, with, with, obviously with some kind of a tax increase over the revenue neutral? And then again, not able to sustain for '22, '23, you know, out of 20, uh, for the next fiscal year. So, how, how do we go about? Because I'm already seeing, we are talking about adding police next year. And then we are already talking about having a bond next year. So, that's the reason why I was asking, you know, how does this revenue neutral work? And, and my next question is, um, I would suggest that we do not touch any money from the transportation fund for the shuttle. Use a different source of bucket. We have committed for that one cent all the time. And that's how we have provisioned money for Airport Boulevard and other intersections. But the, with the stuff that we have seen for Mooresville Carpenter, that we will not be able to bid it out this year, the costs are going to go up. And this bucket would help us to go in the future. Because, and, and I'm, I'm happy that we have, we are funding it back because with DOT not, uh, you know, able to work, you know, and they have their own backlog. But we should not show, you know, our commitment that we are interested in moving forward with our transportation needs. And then the other question I have was, I agree with the small amounts of the food hub and the cultural, is when I look it up, you know, if I'm saying I'm going to increase 3 cents or 4 cents, I don't have a story to tell other than like saying, okay, we are going to have a shuttle or we are going to get something else. What are the public-facing stuff that we can show them? You know, all of these things, network security administrators and other things are all internal to the town. I get it, it is important. But at the same time, there, there are certain things. Okay, we are enhancing your facilities or, or your, uh, programming. It doesn't look very quickly adding, you know, police, the, the verbatim, I think, what Martha has provided and has said echoes because I had the same question. We were never at full capacity with our police and fire. And Jeannie, I wanted one of the FAQs to include, you know, how many people were we shot every year, you know, or every month, you know? Because now what Martha is saying, we are shot off five, that's almost the one unit, you know, we are shot off. So, so, uh, for us, we are not, you know, in any way by not having the police and fire, we are taking away from it because from 2010, the traffic unit was not there. So, um, I'm very cognizant to the things going around. And it is important for us that, um, that we be very sympathetic because we can talk all we want to talk, but it's, it's the taxpayers' money that is, the programmings are coming out of. So, that's my, uh, questions. Then, um, also like Martha, do we know how much lap salary we had this year? Like compared to last year? I know last year you had provided that.
Yeah, we, we don't calcu, we have not calculated that at this point in time.
Okay.
But again, lap salary is not a budget discussion. It's just a capacity discussion.
Exactly. You know, so, and, and had a question of what is a succession plan? I see that, but I have not seen any verbatim of what it really is doing.
So, we put a description of the succession planning in the budget document. It, it really relates to the continued efforts to recruit and retain and prepare for critical position vacancies. There, there's just a lot of workload effort and some expertise outside of our organization that would help us be better prepared when we do have vacancies in key positions. I, I would also like to just clarify something for the record that Councilmember Garamella said that we're not going to bid Mooresville Carpenter Road this year. I do not want that to be part of the record. We do not know that answer yet as to when we're going to be able to bid that contract. And we are continuing to work with trying to get that done as soon as possible.
No, I, I agree. The, my question, my, the reason of putting that was more in, in, uh, in terms of the construction cost is only going to go up. It's not coming down because with, with it could be like a two-month delay or this one, people are bidding it out. So, that's, that's the point of, I was bringing that up. And that was the reason of making sure our transportation result- And that was the reason of making sure our transportation reserve funds are not touched. Then why, why do we have this 12,000? Why, you know, can you give me a rundown of why this, every person that we are getting is a $12,000 to onboarding costs?
Computers, work stuff, uniforms in some cases, training, et cetera.
Okay. All right. So those are.
P P E, equipment for the job.
Okay, because it was rounded up for, you know, like for everyone, so we got different trades in there, so, but everything was 12,000.
It's, it's different depending on what the position is.
Okay, all right. All right, those are my, and I, I agree with what Ann and Vicky have said is, three cents is almost getting everything that we can, and if we can be more creative into that area where we can get some of the stuff like with the food hub and cultural, and also sustainability coordinator, you know, like having it later, but doing the programs, I think that's, Ann's idea was pretty brilliant there. So those are my comments.
Okay, Town Manager, if you want to do the last couple of scenarios.
So Mayor, we've been at it an hour and a half. I don't know how long this next session would be. Do you want to continue before another break or discussion of how long we want to go? My part won't take long, but I don't know how long council will want to talk.
Why don't we go ahead and finish your presentation, and then we'll take a break, and then we'll come back for thoughts.
Okay. Scenario L is 37 and a half cents, so one additional cent over the proposal and one and a half cent less than what our current rate is. This is where we really have to realign reserves because we're now at a place where we want to rely less on fund balance. You also don't want to defer items. So really what this illustrates is, is you could put part of an, it, it reflects everything that was in the proposed budget. It gives you some increased capacity regularly and recurring, but you also should reduce your reliance on fund balance for those one-time expenditures. So it's sort of a recalibration, and we reprogrammed about three quarters of a roadway and transportation reserve with no C I P allocation in this model. The 38 and a half cents, again, all the same stuff as in the proposed budget with a reduced reliance on fund balance. The deferred vehicles go back in. You should take care of your current needs before you add new needs, and the reserves are fully restored in this model. And then the current tax rate, which is six and a half cents over the revenue neutral, just allows for maximum programming. You could do all of your positions for a full year, still have a reduced fund balance reliance. It includes your, some of your deferred vehicle as well as other, and the C I P reserves are in. The, the sustainability allocation is fully in this one, but not the smart city.
Thank you. Any questions about these before Jeannie tells us about what dollars on tax rates mean? Okay, don't see any questions on those scenarios. Thank you very much for presenting so many, all 13, wonderful. Next part of the presentation? Oh, sorry.
Again, I think Jeannie's may be 30 minutes.
Yeah, it might take a little bit longer.
Okay, I was gonna, are we gonna go back over these scenarios, or is this the end? And we're not going to talk about this scenario?
I have presented, we are at your disposal for where you want to go.
So I'd say we need to hear from Jeannie before we put out our thoughts about actual rates, because I think that's important to hear.
Well, that's not where I was headed. I was going to ask some questions about, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
I think, I think it, it makes more sense now than, yeah. So Martha, please, and I, I should know this, I can see it in your spreadsheet. In your proposed budget, you were not putting any funding into the reserve funds.
Correct.
And the C I P. Remind me again why you said no to the C I P reserve fund? Why did you not fund that in your proposed budget?
We didn't have capacity for it.
Okay.
Without taking other things out. The premise was take care of what the needs are versus saving for the future. It was a, it's a trade-off decision that, that I proposed, council has to decide. In, in council's desire to move initiatives forward, we programmed initiatives versus savings. It can be considered other ways.
Okay, thank you. I, I just couldn't remember, and I'm, I know in your letter or in this documentation, the answer is here somewhere, I just couldn't reme. Could you also remind me, in the past, what have we funded out of our transportation reserve fund?
So really, it was last year that you allocated a million dollars to the Airport Boulevard Road.
And then 350 for the preemption.
350 for traffic preemption, which, which is still a work in progress as we're working with the town of Cary.
Okay, and so far, that's all we've used out of that fund. So it's not just been for road construction or road maintenance or?
Maintenance would not ever come out of that fund.
So it's been design work, it's been improvements, it's been anything that can help with the flow of traffic or congestion in the town of Morrisville? Okay, okay, thank you. And then just a couple, since I didn't add this when I had my comments before and others added, I do not disagree with the comments about the food hub and the cultural program. I think that's, I think that's, I'm 100% behind that too. But I also would like to see the succession planning in there, as well as the senior center rec specialists at a full year versus a half year. And I asked about the, the C I P reserve because, you know, we, that would, you could easily swap, and that would give you your police, the four police unit. I mean, so there are ways to, to flip things around, even in the scenarios that we have in front of us, so, okay. All right, that's all, those are my only comments right now. Thank you.
Okay. So would everyone be comfortable, take a 10-minute break, come back at 8:40, and then we'll hear from Jeannie? And then I think it'd be good for all of us to really quickly put on the table kind of where our thoughts are. We've heard from the virtual people in that way. Be good for everyone to put themselves out there, and then we'll have a chance to think about that over two days, come back on Thursday, and really start to hammer down. So, right now it's 8:31. Let's take a 10-minute break, come back at 8:41, please. Thank you. It's 8:41, we're coming back into session. First, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella with a question, and then we'll go to Assistant to the Town Manager Jeannie Hooks.
Yeah, my question was pretty simple. I wanted to know, I wondered in timestamp, how much more time are we spending on this?
I believe Ms. Hooks said it'd be about 30 minutes for her part of the presentation now, and then I think it'd be helpful for us as a group to hear from the people up on the dais, like we heard from you all virtually, about essentially where you are generally. So I'd imagine another 45 minutes to an hour.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Hooks.
Okay, hopefully everyone can hear me now. Let me zoom into this just a little bit. Oop, that's probably too much. 10.
This is what you just sent us. You just sent this to?
Just sent this to everyone through the emails, for, for those that are virtual, so you would have this at home to look at. I handed out here in Town Hall, physical copies. This is just a first part of really attempting to give you some information that might address question number four in your FAQs, you know, really what is, what is the impact to the residential property values? How has it changed since revaluation or sales that may have occurred since 2015? And so this is just a, an analysis. There's a lot of data sampling behind each one of these communities that, that helped build really what the analysis is showing is the averages. So if I can go through this just a little bit to orient you. So for the sampling, for the analysis from used Wake County data, we, we targeted specific neighborhoods. It's not every neighborhood, but it's certainly a good sampling, a good mix of residential housing to give us an idea of what that impact might be. And we targeted at least four properties within each grouping or each neighborhood as a sampling group within the neighborhood. From there, we went and found what was the value before the last revaluation, so in the 2015 value. That's actually very important, and, and you'll see why in a minute for an analysis. And then we took the value as it stands currently today, meaning what you were built on already, and then what you will be built on in the future for the revaluation that just occurred this year. So that's the value for fiscal year or for 2020. I gave you a growth factor here, and it's based on the average between the value of 2019 and the reappraised value, just so you can correlate to some statements that, that I received from and shared with you and received from the tax assessor, what those value drivers came from. So for the residential side of the house, the value drivers really, really came from houses that were around the 250 and less. So those would probably be your town homes, your smaller, smaller homes, or even some of your older housing stock. So I wanted to make sure that you could see really clearly that that's really where the drivers are coming from, not so much from maybe a Providence Place or Preston or even a Kits Creek. Now, while I understand in Kits Creek and in Breckenridge, there's a big mix of housing stock in both of those communities, so that's something we have to kind of take food for thought in the analysis. So moving across, so I showed you what the bill, a tax bill for these average, based on the average, what the average tax bill might be in 2015 for, for those average properties in the sampling group that are, that are underneath this data. Then I showed you what the current tax bill was based on the 39 cents, based on that year's valuation for the properties that produced this average. Then I took it further and I showed you, well, what would be the, the revenue neutral tax bill for that property based on the current, the new value? And then what would that be, the proposed tax rate of 36 and a half be for those sampling of properties? The average in this point is 100 and, about $1,200 a year for an average house of $335,000 in value. And then I moved that across and say, okay, what's the delta between the current tax rate, your current tax, tax bill at the current tax rate to your bill at revenue neutral? So the delta there is $121 a year. And then I took it another step further, and I said, well, what is the delta for the tax bill at the current tax rate to the proposed tax rate? So that's where people currently are now versus what the manager has proposed a tax rate at. That would be what the delta would be, $255 per year for a household that's valued at about $335,000. Now, that's the average of the sampling group. There are homes in that sampling group that are a little higher, there's homes in the sampling group a little bit lower, but that's the average, and that would be the average impact. Then I said, okay, let's, let's, let's look at this in terms of properties that may have sold in 2015. Let's look at the tax rate comparison to 2015 and how that property has changed over these periods of time in revaluation, because the markets between 2015 to now sort of did a little something different. And I think in this case, the average is showing it would be about $224 additional on the tax bill in terms of the comparison of the delta between 2015 and how it was valued then versus how it's valued now at the proposed tax rate. But let me pull you down to this sampling group. So in Chessington, for example, in the sampling group, it's actually showing that there could potentially show that it, it decreased, it would be a decrease at revenue neutral at the new value for these types of homes. And that, that's the difference, that, that's what we've been trying to say. There's not a one size fits all when it comes to revaluation. It impacts all property types, residential and commercial, in very, very different ways. So you can't say that a 36 and a half cent tax rate is a tax increase to everybody. It could potentially be, but in some cases, it might not be. And if you go back and you look at fiscal year 15, at some of the values in the sampling group, some of the homes were valued very high, and actually, at this revaluation, they are lower. And what that does is it means that their tax bill could be a neutral, could be slightly lower, or just slightly higher. It just depends on what the delta is between the difference. So that's just how the market has changed since the revow that was done in 2015 and how those prices went up in our housing stock, because that was a pretty big year, versus how the revow is looking now and what's happened between that time. So, so that's why I thought that was sort of important. Now, overall, each one of the comparisons at the current tax rate as at the average to the proposed tax rate is saying, okay, it's going to be a little more probably for each one of these sampling groups on the average. Now, the data underneath this individually, depending on what the samplings were, the properties, is saying something a little different. Like I said, some homes it might be a little less, some homes it might be a lot more. It just depends on the type of housing stock. Is it new stock? Is it old stock? Is it, is it those, those value drivers that the tax assessor has said, those homes that were 200, valued at 250 or less, those grew at a great rate as compared to a home that might be $900,000 that didn't grow as much in value? Because the housing stock is different, the neighborhoods are different. So, so with that said, you know, something that I mentioned earlier to, I believe, the mayor, it becomes that Morrisville 101 question of affordability per year, per household, and your decision, is $111 an affordable value per household or for this particular grouping of households in this neighborhood? Is that an affordable tax rate and an affordable impact on a household per year, additional $111 for all of the new programming that they could potentially get in that proposed budget for the additional levels of service and for the ability to plan and, and put aside monies for future, for future needs? So hopefully I've oriented you to how you could potentially look at this. This is probably something you need to absorb a little bit. Again, pointing out in, in the analysis, if you went revenue neutral, you potentially could be lowering a tax bill. And what that means is you aren't generating the revenue for your organization, for the town, to really sustain or to move or continue the commitments at the level that you had before. That's what that potentially could be saying. So some, some other observation, as I mentioned, sample demonstrates the revaluation impacts properties in very different ways. There's just not a one size fit all, fits all. You, you can't say this rate is going to be an automatic increase. The sampling also that some properties, as I mentioned, since 2015 have gained value while others have been adjusted down. These are visible and newer, what I noticed in my observations of the sampling group is they're more visible in properties that were greater than 600,000, not all properties, but some of them, depending on the neighborhood, and then a few older properties that were valued at 900 and above, and then some properties that were at 150,000 or less. That's just sort of some observations there. The sampling does support those value drivers that residential with the largest The sampling does support those value drivers that residential with the largest value gains are within the neighborhood, neighborhood property values of 250,000 to 350,000 from Morrisville. I'm sorry, I keep getting the comments popping up. They're distracting me. So there's the example would be Shiloh Grove and Hamlet, those are your townhome community. Fairview Green and Clements, I grouped the older neighborhood groups together just so I could show you an impact there, 26%. Carpenter Park, again, that's a bit of a mix. So you have townhomes and you also have patio homes. But that is a perfect example of where value drivers might be coming from. And then in Breckenridge. And we also recognize that property types do vary greatly in some of those communities, and that can influence the average a little bit. So that's something we just need to be mindful of. And the sampling indicates that some property groups may, as I indicated, really experience a potential for reduced tax bill, depending on what the rate is, if it's at a revenue
For a few minutes, our virtual members have been kicked out, so we're working on
Did she see someone on commercial property?
It's coming. She's working on it. She's almost done with it.
That's what I'm curious about.
Yes.
I mean, that's...
Did you see how much cotton place increased in a year?
Okay, now just in one year, 19%, that's pretty substantial.
Okay. And just let me know where I need to start back.
Okay. Town Clerk Smith, if you would please do a roll call to make sure that we're all back and present. I'd appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Mayor Colley, present. Mayor Protem Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Fender.
Present.
Councilmember Garamella.
Yeah, I think the audio from in here is going on out. I can see them, but I don't think they can hear us.
Yeah, well, even then, it said that it can't find speakers, but...
This looks like we're muted.
I see them all.
Not sure what was saying.
Hey, Garamella.
They're laughing.
They're having a good time.
I love the split screen view.
At least they're having fun.
Can you read my lips?
It appears that they can hear each other.
Read my lips?
He's coming to fix it. They have the dial back here.
So for those watching the stream at home, please be patient. We have our IT department working on reconnecting our virtual members. We don't want to move forward without them. So Jeannie, are you going to wrap up the residential, and we'll take some questions on this, and then you're going to show us commercials?
Welcome to the Audio Conferencing Center. Please enter a conference ID followed by pound. You are now joining the meeting.
Zoom, Erin, don't do Zoom, because Zoom has servers in China.
Councilmember Garamella, we can hear you now.
There we go.
We are not live, are we?
Yes.
We can hear you now, Councilmember Garamella.
Hey.
Okay.
Nice.
So, Town Clerk, just going to do a roll call now, please. Thank you.
But why does it say pre-live for us?
Yeah, that's the question.
They just said pre-live the whole meeting because we're in swag.
Yeah, that's what...
Because what?
It's a...
You can't hear you guys. Because of swag it?
It's good.
Okay, Town Clerk.
Mayor Colley, present. Mayor Protem Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Fender.
Present.
Councilmember Garamella.
Present.
Councilmember Rao.
Present.
Councilmember Robati.
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins Johnson.
All councils present. Assistant Town Manager Miss Hooks, if you could continue. I'm not sure how long they were missing.
So I'll just summarize that this is good information for you to take back and think about between now and, of course, on Thursday, we'll have another opportunity to talk a little more in depth about it. The sampling groups, there is data behind each one of these neighborhoods. There's a total of five properties per grouping. It just demonstrates that there could be a shift. It also, a shift in the type of tax bill, well, how much of a delta there is between shifting from a 39 cent tax rate at the old valuation to a proposed tax rate, whatever that is, that the proposed tax rate in this comparison was 36 and 1/2. It also demonstrates very important message that I want to repeat, is that there's not a one size fits all approach in setting a tax rate as to how it impacts a property and the tax bill that they pay each year. And then worth repeating again, just in case others did not hear, it really goes back to that Morrisville 101 conversation that I have with citizens every year, is in terms of affordability, how much of a difference is $111 per year to you, mean to you as a property owner, versus what you could get for that $111 in this particular proposed budget in new enhanced programs, expanded services, i.e. the senior center, the MAFC programs, all of those quality of life items that we talked about. So we've had another PC issue. Hopefully, we're still streaming Mayor to, while this is running. Are you texting him? Okay. To answer your question on a median valued home, so let's talk about that just a second. The median value was around $290,000 in current year measures of value. At 39 cents, the tax bill would be a little more than $1,100. It currently now, as an example that I have used with you guys, is that it reappraised for $350,000. That's the new median. So in this hypothetical, at 36 and 1/2 cents, that would be just over $1,250 a year. So that delta is about $140 some dollars more a year for that kind of household that's reappraised now from $290 to $350. So that's in your value driver group, and that's what that potential impact could be to a homeowner in that, with that pricing.
Okay.
So with that, I'm going to close and open it up or hand it back to you, Mayor, for questions, anything in depth on these or other items we need to talk about.
Okay, so to be clear, the chart, which we can't see right now, essentially shows that your tax bill could go north or south depending. But essentially, if you have a $350,000 house, one penny on the tax rate is equivalent to Is that an accurate statement? If my house is worth $350,000, if we change our tax rate by one penny, that's $35 a year. So that's the amount of increment we're talking about.
Yes.
So that's just something for the scale of what we're talking about. We had for a little while a question from Councilmember Garamella, and then we'll go to Councilmember Fender.
My question, Jeannie, is like you're projecting only the town taxes, right, not adding the county together, because we pay as a whole, not like, you know, part-wise.
You pay, in your tax bill, you pay Wake County property taxes, you of course pay Morrisville taxes, and you pay the stormwater fee. That's also a part of the bill at this point. The sampling focuses on what your span of control is, which is your tax rate, what you have in your authority of levying that generates your largest revenue income for the town.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I get it, but also, it would be good to have that number two, because with our rate, how much is that also? So that it doesn't give, because it gives only one side of the picture, saying this is what it is, but give a real picture with the same example, how much all the other taxes are too.
But that's not, that is not under our control, so why...
No, it's not the question of control. Like, you know, we are giving a feeling that it's only $134, but it's not that, right? It is the whole thing that you had to pay. You can't just pay the town taxes.
But it is your tax rate that you set that impacts your community for the services that you provide for that revenue. You don't have a span of control over what Wake County sets and how that has an influence over those services that are in their control, not our control.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to give the people the impression that Councilmember Garamella, that their tax bill is this, and we can only tell them what we're getting them for it. We can't speak towards what Wake County is going to be providing.
But just giving what we have at this 2020, at least that would be a fair assessment. Obviously, we all know that we don't have any control on that, but we do have control on what the current rate is. That's all.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that thought. Councilmember Fender, and then Councilmember Robati, please.
I just wanted to make a brief comment following through with what Jeannie was saying in her example of the residents. The yearly property tax rate went up, what, $125?
For a median home?
Yes.
So it went up, comparing the median as it was before at 290 to 350, it went up $140 some dollars per year.
Okay. And so I just want to comment, what is that? So if it's $140 a year, that's an increase of $11.67 per month.
Per month.
Just wanted to follow that calculation through. That would be, you know, people would just be paying as part of their mortgage payment into their escrow.
Okay, that helps with the level of scale. Councilmember Robati, and then Mayor Protem, please.
Yeah, so I would like to, I would be very interested in seeing the numbers. I understand that not all businesses are affected by the property tax rate, but I would be interested in seeing numbers for businesses that will be affected by the property tax rate. So businesses that are owned and operated in Morrisville. Yeah, I mean, I would be interested in seeing those numbers. It's very difficult for me to vote for a budget without understanding how it's going to affect Morrisville's small business owners. That's basically all I have. Thank you.
So that's information staff's currently working on and will prepare and provide is the other side of your tax-based component, which is commercial.
Thank you, Jeannie.
You're welcome.
You're hoping to have that on Thursday?
I'm hoping to have that all wrapped up tomorrow morning, and I can hopefully email that out.
So now it's back to us for continued discussion, or is there any wrap-up?
So if there are no other questions, you know, of course, you can ask other questions on Thursday. I think at this time, it's really important for council to focus on what you need to talk to each other about in terms of these scenarios that have been proposed, and what those important things are that really need to be a part of something else that staff could bring back. I think you heard the important key words here. There could be trade-offs. It's just what do you all connect with the most that could be something you could all stand behind? It's there. It's just you communicating with each other and finding compromise or collaboration and agreement. I'm hearing a lot of similar thoughts from those that we've heard from tonight, as you talked about the scenarios.
Okay. Mayor Protem.
So I agree, Jeannie. You all have heard a lot tonight. We have all kind of shared the projects that we did want to see moving forward, and to your point, there are trade-offs, and we clearly can see that now in all the scenarios that you've given us. So I'm going to ask, in anticipation of getting ready for Thursday and helping us, with what you've heard tonight, could you come back, because you could hear we didn't like the three cent scenarios that you showed us? Can you come back with another scenario based on all the information you've kind of heard here tonight? And because we've all are kind of all over the board, I'm not sure you can fit it all into a three cent scenario, could you come back with a three and 1/2 cent scenario too? So like a 35.5 alternate scenario from what you've given us, and then a 36 scenario? Because, of course, we've already seen your original proposed 36 and 1/2. We've seen your, I would say, your one other preferred alternate to 36.5, although you gave us a whole bunch of other ones. I think if we're going to go to 36 and 1/2, we need to kind of stick with somewhere around those two. But anyhow, could you come back? So, long story short, can you come back with one 35 and 1/2 based on everything you've heard, and maybe because you can't get it all in, bring back a 36? And then at least we have something to react to based on what we've all shared tonight. So that would be my request.
So the answer is yes. I guess my question is, is that where council, by consensus at this point, is focusing?
Let's all put our stuff out there real quick. We've heard some people say they're comfortable with three, but it doesn't quite mean... We've heard some people say they're comfortable at three, but it doesn't quite meet all their needs and things like that. Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, so I would like to note that whether we land on the three cents or the four cents, I would rather see this 200,000 that is currently in these scenarios allocated for the CIP Capital Reserve. I would rather see that used for additional capacity, whether it's the police positions, the fire chiefs, or the sustainability program coordinator. Given that it is going to be a lean year, I could see foregoing that 200,000 in the capital reserve to, um, you know, meet, allocate those funds to another initiative that is important to the town council. And I will say that I, I am definitely in favor of keeping the roadway and transportation capital reserve and your scenarios here all have that 600,000 allocated for that. So I'm in favor of keeping that in there in any other future scenarios.
So those are, those are in the four cent scenarios, the transportation?
Yeah, in the, um, it's in the scenarios G through K, the other ones, not the one, not the four cent scenario that's in the budget report.
Not the initial proposed, okay.
Right, and, but for me going forward, the things that are important to me are the public safety, you know, all the things we've really, we've talked about, the cultural programs, food hub programs, and then also, you know, keeping the smart city initiatives in there and sustainability initiatives in there. Whether it's, I could go to the three, I would prefer the four cents, wherever we land in there, those are the priorities where I'm looking.
Okay, I'd like to share my thoughts and then we'll go to Councilmember Rao. I am very much in favor of just looking at our needs and what we've been hearing from the residents all year long, and that's about roadways. I think it's imperative that we have a recreation center supervisor for the senior center for at least half a year because we're, we're building it, we're paying good money for that, and if we don't program it, that's not so useful. I think sidewalk construction is something that, all the more important these days when people are outside more. That's been something that we've been looking to do. We've been waiting on DOT a little bit to hear how much money we're getting back now that we know. We can really focus on that and move that forward. Affordable housing is something that we've heard from people and is really important. Other towns are devoting full pennies to this. The $100,000 that we are contemplating, I think, is important to show our devotion and our support of the people that we'd like to have in town, which are, include our staff, publics and public school teachers. I think road paving of 100,000 is a great investment into the future. Anything less than the new preferred from staff, I think, is more of a one-year budget. And I was hopeful that over these past few years, when we went to a strategic plan and we're making progress and momentum, that we would stick with the strategic plan and keep making the progress in a meaningful way. I hear us talking all throughout the year about how things are important to us, but now is the time to show that they're important by actually funding them and letting the tax rate fall where it may, not concentrating on trying to fit into a tax rate rather than having the needs met and then discovering what that tax rate is. We haven't really talked about it because it hasn't been in any of the proposed budgets, but I think an economic development and recovery specialist is an urgent need. We have that in the FAQ. If we are looking to start our recovery immediately, we need to have someone onboard who's a specialist that we can make sure that our small businesses, many will thrive afterwards, but many will be lucky to survive and they'll need help to thrive on the other side. I want us to keep in mind that a lot of these things were already deferred in the proposed budget. $3 million worth in fact. So if you want to have capacity and be a resilient town, I think going with the town's suggested budget is a starting point. And from there, I would add these other items. This budget does not advance any achievement of 124 needed acres of parks and open space, which if we value that, we need to make sure that we have capacity, which means using our property tax rate now and then for one-time things and then having that capacity in the future for other one-time things. So I want us to be looking more forward than just the short, short view that I think that some towns may be getting into, but COVID is going to last six months to a year. This budget is going to affect our town for many years. So I want us to keep that in mind. Police and fire coverage, we have national rated agencies. If we want to improve and keep those ISO ratings, we need to keep investing in them. Even though those are recurring costs, I think those are good investments into the future. There's other small things like the pew house. We understand, we'd like to use that. That's not anywhere in this budget. So we need more capacity to do the good work that the people have been asking us to do. So, and I think sustainability and smart cities are really what residents are looking for. So I'm not talking about tax rate right now. I'm talking about, these are the things that I think are important to include in any budget that we pass. Then those are my comments for now. I look forward to more conversation on Thursday and hearing from more council members tonight. So Councilmember Rao and then Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
If she could go first, please, if you don't mind. Can you like, Councilmember?
That's fine, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Thank you, Councilmember Rao, for that. I just wanted to say that this evening's update has been very helpful for me. We have a lot of questions and we've received a lot of information. However, the business impact or the, the impact of a tax rate on businesses is something that I am wanting to see before I really kind of weigh in any further. I'm most comfortable with the three cent tax rate. There is more than just the property taxes that go into somebody's taxes. There's Wake County taxes, our vehicle taxes, we actually do control that. However, unfortunately, we have maxed out our avail, you know, the, the amount that we can charge as a town for vehicles, so we can't move that out any further. And most of the municipalities in Wake County have also maxed that out. So it's not uncommon of what we've done. It's just that we can't use that any further to increase revenue. But it, we have, half of our taxpayers are the businesses and I really want to see that. And I don't completely agree with the mayor in the sense that we are moving forward with the budget at three cents. Maybe not as quickly, but we also have to be mindful of people's livelihood and their jobs. And it, it seems like $100 doesn't, you know, seem like a lot of money, but there are a lot of compounding factors right now for people and we need to be mindful of what we are asking of them. So with more information about the businesses and some other areas, it would be really helpful to have more confidence in the decisions that we make as a council, for me at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rao.
Oh, thank you. So I think that, one thing I think that's important for us to convey to the public, because I know we've gotten a few emails from the business committee, is that whatever tax increase above revenue neutral shouldn't be only looked at as an increase, it's an investment in the community to do many of the things that we want to move forward. So this has been very helpful for me tonight to get the information that I can take back, look at what the trade-offs are. I do think that transportation is very important, a smart city, sustainability, and getting the information on the business impact to me is also important because it's over half of our revenue. And if we weren't in a COVID crisis, I would, would make the decision to go to four cents, but I, I just want to sort of look back through the trade-offs and see, you know, what I'm the most comfortable with along with my colleagues in coming up with. But, um, you know, I think that there's a lot of really great things that we can do and, and I hope the mayor is correct that, that the crisis could be over in six months, maybe a year. Some people are saying that it could come back in the fall or in the winter, we don't know. So I guess there's just a lot of uncertain, unanswered questions that we don't know. But I mean, the other, the final point I'll make to those listening tonight is that it's important for me to know that other jurisdictions around us have also had the opportunity of staying revenue neutral and have not stayed revenue neutral. And I think that's also important for the businesses that are listening and the citizens that these towns, Cary and other towns are considering going above revenue neutral to make those investments so that the community can continue to grow, so that when we are in recovery, they can flourish and we can be back to a new normal, although we don't know what that new normal is. So that's where my focus is. I can't come back with an agreed rate, but I'm going to hone in on it, do my homework and then, you know, I think we're getting close and come back, you know, Thursday. So, thank you very much.
Mayor Protem.
So I'm going to make my request again. I have heard a lot of consensus here tonight on items that council wants to see in the budget, like the food hub and the cultural resources position, smart cities, sustainability. There were a lot of interest around all that, so I'm going to make my request again that we give staff the option to incorporate all that into a budget that we can then really take a look at on Thursday. And, and again, I would, I would say like a three cent, you know, a 35 and a half budget, but maybe also a 36 cent one because I'm not sure they're going to be able to find a way to get it all in there.
And I would say 36.5 as well, just, that's a good range.
I said that before, we have, we have 36.5, we've got all these other options in front of us as well.
That one didn't meet our needs, obviously, otherwise we'd bless it right now. So we don't have one at 36.5 that people are happy with.
No, I know, but I heard a lot of consensus around 35 and a half. I heard a lot of consensus around different items that we were, we'd like to see in the budget. So I'd like our staff to have the opportunity to massage it a little bit and come back with something. That may still not meet our needs. We have how many, three more workshops if we need them, but I, I, I hear a lot of consensus tonight and I'd like to make sure that what I've, what we've all heard is incorporated into something that we can find more agreeable. I think I, I'm, I'm feeling and hearing agreement and consensus and I'd like to see that in, in another option.
I think that's reasonable. I'm not sure why we'd have to bracket it around the property tax rate because it's not about the property tax rate necessarily because we haven't even heard about business yet.
I know, I know, we have more information to come. I, I, I think you haven't heard anybody, I've not heard anybody say that they're looking to go above 36.5 except yourself. I've not heard anybody else. That's why I didn't, and we have those options in front of us if we care to delve into those some more. I haven't heard that. I haven't heard anybody besides yourself say that.
Well, you've heard me talk about what I'm interested in, but.
I know, and they have too. I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm saying everything that we've heard and especially those things that had, there had been consensus around. I'd like to see them in, in a budget.
In a budget, okay. Does staff have what they need to prepare us for Thursday? Excellent, and I know this is a lot that we've put on your plate and that you'll get it to us as quickly as you can and we'll have it when we have it. I don't see any final thoughts, so we will reconvene on Thursday at 6:00 PM in the same hybrid fashion. We look forward to continued discussion on the budget, which is one of the most important things we do every year. Appreciate the consensus and everyone sharing their thoughts as we keep doing that. As Mayor Protem mentioned, we have a few more sessions to hammer this out. And the fact that a lot of people can see it online and understand where we are and where we're moving, we want continued public input through the budget portal at townofmorrisville.org/budgetportal. And you can also give us input on our social media and that will also be collated and brought to us. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn unless staff has any other updates or anything.
So moved.
I'll second.
Councilmember Steve Rao made a motion and Mayor Protem has a second to go to adjourn. Town Clerk Smith, if you can do a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn passes unanimously.
Okay, it is 9:29, we are adjourned.